Okay, Sessar. You might have muted yourself, Sessar.
Good morning. Today is Thursday, April 23rd, 2020. Commissioners' Court is meeting in special open session. Would you please rise and join us for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all forms. Jessica?
You're muted.
Item number three is the public comments.
Okay, Jessica, before we start, just wanted to make a quick introductory comments and then we'll move into the... So first of all, thank you and welcome to our executive session, Commissioners' Court. To everybody, I hope that we do get enough viewers because, you know, we handle and deal with a lot of issues and matters that are a lot of concern to people. You know, we all get, the commissioners and myself get a lot of phone calls and hopefully through these discussions, we can communicate. We've had the opportunity yesterday at the regional forum. I think we had over 350, close to 400 listeners. So we now know that we do reach a larger audience. So some good things come out of difficult situations and that is the ability to reach our community and convey our vision and thoughts. We have the NMSU chancellor and Allen Russell from Tecma Industries participating. So I'm hoping it is taped and I'm hoping that everyone has an opportunity to hear the comments that were made and the questions that were asked. I guess right now, the only thing is we're ready sometime today to our order, the county's order, to come out. And there wasn't some very significant changes. We focus a little bit more on being stricter as we move into the to-go retail concept that the governor has discussed that'll happen tomorrow. And so we looked at some of the areas that would help us to be able to address and contain the virus and at the same time be conscientious of the difficulties that our economy and our businesses are experiencing at this point in time. There is a huge push and, you know, I need to convey this from our court and it's... I can't speak for the commissioners, but I know their thoughtfulness and their understanding and more than anything, their ability to understand each one of their precincts. Their closeness to that is very valuable. But I feel that we're trying to shift the balance from public health being the driver and then the economy being something that we minimize and that we look at. And I've talked about that, but it's gotten a lot more intense in the last few days. The shift is more now, we're ready to open the economy and we think that we're already in a containment phase. And people are pretty frustrated and upset about not being able to go out and that the stay-home order is now no longer necessary is pretty much the temperament out there. And so I believe that El Paso is behind the curve because, not because we haven't done everything. I think we've been exceptional as a community, but I think that we started later in the curve and that's why we need a little bit more time. But in no way is that a reflection that we are not doing everything from the Commissioners' Court to our relationship with the city, to our relationship with OEM. We're doing the best that we can and we've gotten some great traction and great results. But we are also a couple of weeks, in my opinion, from being able to have the type of discussions and narratives that I keep hearing from the rest of Texas and sometimes from the rest of the country. Some states are ready to move forward, much more than others. And so Texas should be sensitive of El Paso. The capital should be sensitive of El Paso because if we were to compare what other states are doing, then Texas falls a little behind as well. And so I think there's some correlation there. So we'll wait to see what happens. Like I said, I, you know, I've had a lot of discussions with Dr. Ocaranza, Public Health, Jorge Rodriguez, and, you know, there is still some sensitivity that the curve is still in a climb. We have dynamics with Juarez, dynamics with New Mexico. So we've always talked about the region and now we, as a region, are going to have to rely on each other. The numbers that New Mexico and Chihuahua and what we show in conjunction with each other, I think is going to be a huge factor in the kinds of activities moving towards the recovery. So finally, we're just asking that every organization begin to put a recovery plan as how it pertains to them, to be conscientious. Not every organization should jump on the bandwagon of carryout if they're not ready to do so, if they don't have the ability, the mass equipment and things that are required to be able to have a very safe environment for their employees as well as for their customers. I'm working with Nicole and Betsy on a recovery plan for ourselves here at the county. As always, I feel that we've been great role models and we show how we're going to have the recovery and how we're going to go back from perhaps skeleton crew to actually full, you know, full recovery. It's a process and it's a very conscientious, very thoughtful process that takes into consideration safety, that we're productive, but that not in any single way that we contribute to the spreading of this insidious disease. So I thank you and we'll move forward on our agenda. Jessica?
Judge, real quick, before we go forward on the agenda, I just want to wish Jessica a belated happy birthday. Yesterday was her birthday, so...
And if it weren't for Commissioner Staub, we almost missed Joanne. Well, actually, she wasn't on the call, so I guess we could wish her happy birthday as well. I think that was Monday. So I think Irene Valenzuela also had a birthday this week. So I'm very glad that, I'm hoping that they're hearing this and that we could wish them well during these difficult times. Thank you. Thank you, Betsy.
Remember to unmute Jessica.
Thank you. Item number three is public comments. At this time, we do not have anybody signed up to speak for public comments or take no action for item number three. Item number four from the regular agenda. Discuss and take appropriate action regarding El Paso County's preparation and response for COVID-19.
Judge, Commissioners, we have this item, this is the standing item for COVID updates. We don't have any specific updates unless any member of the court wants to share any updates.
Just can I go real quick on that task force that was put together yesterday between the mayor and myself? We identified, well, I didn't in particular. I sort of, I was brought into the task force and it was really nice to have the county and the city responding to some great people that were on that call, business people, universities, leadership, almost every dimension. But in our case, I did bring Andrea into that task force and very proud to have her on the task force. Betsy and I discussed that and she would make an excellent participant in the task force. So Andrea, congratulations. I think it's indicative of what you're doing in the community and I think you're going to be an amazing contributor and representation of our county concerns and expectations. Thank you.
Do any of the members of the court have any updates?
By the way, it's a recovery focused mostly on the economy with collateral issues that come up from the public health. So the public health will continue strongly as they continue strongly on the economic side, looking at, you know, how can we recover in the best way possible?
Okay. I didn't know if Commissioner Leon, I thought you might have an update?
Okay, if we're talking about the possibility of... I think I sent all of you an email on JPD where we have, and I think Chief Martinez is on the line also, that we have three employees at JPD that have been diagnosed with COVID-19. As I understand it, all three are at home recovering, they're doing well. The one youth inmate is also recovering and doing well at the center itself. I failed to put out this information on Monday. I was reminded and that's why I sent that late email yesterday. I apologize for being so late.
Thank you, sir. Does any member of the court have any questions before we proceed to the next item? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. No action for item number four. Item number five. Receive and discuss a presentation regarding the financial impact of COVID-19 to the FY 2020 and FY 2021 county budget and take appropriate action.
Miguel, can you pull up our slides, please? Okay. Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. As we've all seen, this health crisis has also created an economic crisis for our world and our community. Over 30,000 El Pasoans have filed for unemployment. Many of our businesses remain closed to protect the community from further spread of this highly contagious disease. And while this is helping our healthcare system to handle the cases we've experienced, we have to prepare financially as an organization, as you know. And before I turn this presentation over to Wally, I'm finding many areas of positivity throughout our response to this crisis and the majority of them have to do with our county family. Today, as we go through our financial preparations, I find that... I find that the work that this court and our departments have done to establish our strong financial conditions is going to make weathering this financial storm much easier for all of us. So Wally is going to start the presentation and I'm going to turn it over to him.
Good morning, Judge, commissioners. Your first slide here just shows the agenda we're going to go over today. Today's financial update will include fiscal concerns, a financial update, how we'll meet this challenge, acting actions for your consideration today. And we'll finish with employment statistics and options the court may consider. And finally, the actions you consider today to begin our plan to recovery. Next slide. Overall, COVID-19 is estimated to have about a $17 million impact on our county this fiscal year. It will likely take as much as two to three years to recover from the impacts of this pandemic. Those that were here in the last recession will recall a similar timeline. Mr. Deon and I have been working on reviewing the current impacts on our revenue and the reserves. And the uncertainty and the duration and overall impacts of the, the uncertainty of how long this will last and the overall impact of the shelter in place makes this forecasting somewhat difficult. We have discussed this with our peers in the community and around the state. And everyone is having similar challenges. Lastly, due to this impact, we must reassess the current planned budget investments, which we will discuss later in this presentation. Next slide.
Wally, a quick comment, please? Wally, is, I know you can't do that now, but is there a way that we could also, and I know it's difficult to estimate, but there is funding that's coming in and there's stimulus packages and there's certain opportunities. If there's a way, not now, but later, that we could show some, at least some of the impact it would have on our budget and what that would look like and at least some expectations that are aligned with, we have funding and opportunities. How would that impact a budget if we were to get, and you could use, say, 80% the possibility of getting the fund or at least some way of understanding that, you said it last time, it took two to, two to three years. But I'm sure there was no stimulus packages or funding that was, that was related to the recovery. So if there's anything, I know it's a broad request, but if you could sort of look at what would be some of the opportunities that would offset some of the challenges that we'll have due to, to our experience?
Absolutely, sir. We will be looking at all receiving and look at the availability of augmenting any of our financial losses and looking for expense, any expense recovery. We're tracking all expenses very, very closely and our grants team along with our new government affairs member, Mr. Collins, is looking very aggressively for those opportunities. So as we proceed over the next few days, weeks and months, we're going to turn over every stone and look for any opportunity to look at how we could impact and, and improve our recovery and, and also have better predictability on how long this recovery may take.
Thank you, Wally.
Yes, sir. Right here, when we adopted the budget last year, our estimated reserves were just under 85 million at the time we adopted the budget. You'll hear from Mr. Deon on Monday during his presentation of the audited annual financial report for 2019. Our reserves finished the year at just over $92 million. This is the highest year-end fund balance we've ever had. The revenue estimate for fiscal year 2020 budget were certified at just under $300 million. But we are anticipating they're going to fall short by about $14 million of the original estimate. This will be the first time revenues, if that happens, will ever fall short of, of the certified budget, which is necessitating the action you're going to consider later today. This COVID event will likely result in, in that revenue reduction. And as a reminder, we also utilized over $50 million in planned reserves to balance the FY 20 budget. We haven't kept the reserves lately in the last few years as we budgeted those. But it appears based on our current estimates that we'll probably utilize somewhere in the area of $17 million of those budgeted reserves, again, as a result from the impacts of COVID. Conservation and preservation of this reserve will be paramount in meeting our future challenges that we, that are being posed by the COVID event over the next few years as we both recover both physically and financially. Next slide. After going through several iterations of estimates, we believe the net revenue loss to the county, and I, I say net because we are going to have a couple of revenue gains we've taken into account. We believe the net revenue loss that we'll experience will exceed $13 million this year. And the next few slides I'll use to provide an overview of the major categories of this county revenue. Next slide. As reported to you earlier this year, we are very likely to finish approximately $4 million over budget due to the fact that the final appraisal rolls that went out in October for tax bill preparation had a much higher appraised value than the certified value we received and used to balance, to calculate our tax rate and estimate our revenues in July last year. According to Central Appraisal District, residential values this year will not change from last year, but they will be reappraised as statutorily required in 2021. That is a mandated reappraisal year. Commercial and industrial reappraisals and that process will not change this year. And this practice has been confirmed by the state and is legally required as well. However, it is anticipated that the values and subsequent suits may likely be challenged and spike as a result of revenue loss from revenue-producing properties as a result of COVID-19 and the shutdown that they are currently under order. This won't, it's not anticipated to impact the 2020 valuation. We've confirmed that with Central Appraisal District, but it will most certainly impact the 2021 property valuation. As a reminder, truth in taxation is the, is the process that we use to calculate tax rates in any given year. As it currently stands, we'll have rate impacts next, we will have rate impacts next year based on sales tax implications from this year. Changes in value, if those commercial and industrial property values change or are lowered, that will impact next year's calculated tax rate as will the incarcerated state prisoners we have in our county jail right now. As you're aware, the State Commission on Jails has issued an order not to accept any state prisoners. So we anticipate the number of papered-in inmates will go up in our jail. We have the full intent of remitting an invoice to the state of Texas for that increased cost of housing those prisoners. But the three components I just mentioned that are county responsibility and, and affect our, our county revenues and expenses are all taken into account for tax calculation purposes. Those three elements are, are one of the 50-some-odd lines in a tax calculation. Last concern I have regarding property taxes for next year is we are going into a, a new legislative session and those factors I just mentioned may very well arise for discussion at the state level. So we'll need to be very engaged in the legislative process next year. Any questions on this slide before I proceed?
Wally?
Yes, sir.
This is Vince. I, I just wanted to say on, on, on the top line that you have due to the, the 4.3 million, we, we did have that issue this year where CAD suddenly changed the, right? There was a drop in the valuation in the final certified total because they were holding back a certain amount of money as, as a side for, for lost, lost valuation and see that, that did affect our effective tax rate. And I think we, we did say that we were going to see additional funds because of it. Right, I'm trying to remember what exactly CAD, CAD did, right? They, they withheld part of the certified value.
Yes, they, they, there's a calculation they perform and the rate that they do for that calculation was one of the highest rates we've had in, in recent history. And that brought overall values down, increased the effective and rolled back tax rate. But also the, the second component of that, that is resulting in this, this anticipated spike in revenue that we'll receive this year is the final values that they mailed out on the tax bills were significantly higher than that certified value. And that's going to lead to that $4 million spike in revenue. So it's, it was a two-prong effect that we, we felt this year.
Wally? Two things about that is we will only feel that the first time, you know, as they go forward, if they continue using the same formula, we won't experience that again. However, if they go back, I imagine we could have a, a reverse impact, correct?
Correct, that is true. Now, my understanding is they're going to use a similar formula this year. And the preliminary discussions I had with them last week on our conference call, their, their intent is to use the same formula this year.
Okay, and I guess we just need to track that. I mean, because remember that part of that was set aside, I guess, for, what was it? For, for tax revenue that doesn't come in or, or tax revenue that's returned due to lawsuits? You know, to see if that's the case, because, you know, I'm, I'm trying to, I have a CAD meeting today on their budget and it's something I intend to bring up. Because it, it does affect the effective tax rate and, you know, and trying to get an accurate assessment. It matters how, how they calculate that. But I mean, if we are really losing that additional amount and, you know, due to lawsuits, then, then we need to know that as well.
Okay, sir. If there's no other questions, we'll proceed with the next slide. So this is our single largest revenue impact this year that we're anticipating. Current impact of sales tax can be as high as about $6.7 million from the budgeted revenue. That we, we are offsetting that for the first portion of the year. For the first six months, we did have significant gains, but this is the net loss we're anticipating in sales tax revenue. What we receive in the next 45 days, that being the first week of May, we will feel the two-week effect of the shelter in place and the closure of bars and restaurants and retail outlets. So in about two weeks, we'll really get a feel and a sense for how significant that impact may be. I still think there's a little bit of large volume purchasing going on with people trying to prepare for shelter at home. But most of the purchases are probably moving towards the non-taxable side as opposed to the taxable sales. So we'll get our, we'll get a better sense in about two weeks, the impact for half of March. The month after that, when we get our June payment, which will be the full month of April, we'll have a true, true sense of what the longer-term impacts may be. But taking into account, if we remained shelter at home for the month of April and at least half of May, and I think our estimates, we went with all of May at shelter at home, we think the net impact of the county is going to be about $6.7 million. Now, how long we stay under the current economic conditions of shelter at home and in an effort, you know, with that effort of bending the curve on the COVID and to protect our citizens and coupled with the future unemployment trends will determine the longer-term impact of this revenue source. So on a month-by-month basis, Mr. Deon and myself are going to look at what those receipts are coming in and how we will do the longer-term projection on what we're going to get over the next 16 to 18 months to meet our needs for fiscal year 2021 as well. Questions on sales tax before I proceed? Next slide. So this is, got the last of the list of items that have the most material impact on our revenue estimates. Federal revenues resulting from our contract with the US Marshals will continue, are likely to continue to drop. I've had a, a number of conversations with the Sheriff's Department and Chief Witten over the last few weeks. They've held discussions with the Marshals as well. And we believe this count will probably level off and hover in that 500 per day range. But overall, this will result very likely in a $1.1 million drop below revenue estimates. So in prior years, we've always exceeded the revenue estimate. This will be the first year we anticipate coming in below the revenue estimate. And that'll be the first year in history. As a note, we are still awaiting to conduct our live negotiation. We have opened the negotiation process with the federal government as recent as last month, a few weeks ago. They asked for some information and some questions to be responded to on our application. We've remitted all the responses and the data requested by the marshal and we're actually awaiting notification for the actual negotiations. I suspect we may feel a little bit of a delay on that with a recent COVID-19 event going on. But we will reach out to the, our contact with the Marshal's Office in DC and try and when that actual negotiation will, will start. On interest rates, as a, as a result of the record rate drops from the Federal Reserve in an effort to offset the impact of the current nationwide financial crisis, this revenue estimate has been reduced by a million dollars. On fines and court costs, I can tell you from direct experience and getting reports from my team downstairs in the courthouse, our current financial recovery division collections are down as much as 86% from face-to-face transactions, which is our highest area of fines and court costs. As such, the estimates from, for this impact could be as much as $1.6 million with our municipal court, with our misdemeanor courts not having the daily volume of misdemeanor cases and our JP courts inactive right now. About a $1.6 million estimate. Longer term, and the challenge we'll have for FY 2021 and the conversation I've had with the auditor is we're going to have to look at how significant the lack of court cost collections are on all of the special revenue funds as well. Because those are earmarked for those specific purposes, like the approval you had on Monday's agenda with records management. So we'll need to hone in on what we believe the impact will be for FY 2020 and 2021 on our special revenues. Mixed beverages. We actually, when we were doing our final round of revenue estimates on Tuesday night, our mixed beverage receipt came in and that mixed beverage quarterly did include the last, the month of March. And so we did get to feel the impact of those last two weeks of March. So overall, if those last two weeks of March are an indicator, mixed beverages collections may be down by between 43 and 50%. I know beverage stores are, have been interviewed and their, their sales at the storefront are very, very high. But until, until we see the third quarter revenue receipt, the indicator from the March collection that we made on Tuesday night looks like it could be 43 to 50% down for the last two quarters. And so that's about a $600,000, over a $600,000 impact. The closure of our parks, sports parks and, and pool facilities would result in revenues being down by about $1.2 million. The transfers in, I mentioned from the special revenue accounts, what we, what we get in for courthouse security, court reporter fees, juvenile case managers and things like that, we're anticipating a $500,000 reduction for transfers coming into the general fund. And then lastly, as we look across the county at large, when you look at the tax office, the county clerk, the district clerk, sheriff's office and every other fee generating office that has a charge for service, the, the closures anticipated have an impact of about $5 million. All of these numbers I just gave you that are, that total up to the $13.4 million are under the assumption we start to resume some level of whatever the new normal business is going to be during the month of June at this time. If we shelter in place any longer than the end of May, these numbers will go up on a monthly basis. But this is under the assumption that we start to resume some, some normal level of operations during the month of June. Questions on this slide before I proceed? Okay, next slide.
Wally, on, on, I'm sorry, on, on the number of bookings for, for the federal inmates, is there a number of minimum bookings that are necessary for, for revenues to, to meet expenditures on, on that?
I've, I've, that's a good question. I'll, I'll have to do a calculation on that to see if there was like a, a break-even count. Let me look at that and I'll, I'll follow up with the court, sir.
One, one element of that, Commissioner Pettis and Judge and Commissioners. So obviously, we're not, at this point, what, what the sheriff is doing is he's holding positions vacant in the detention centers to help with the reduction in federal prisoners. Obviously, with less inmates, he needs less staff to run the operation. But we're not making any permanent changes, just holding these vacancies because we expect that when things return to normal or some sense of normal and that the risk is less, that those inmate numbers could return. Until then, if the vacancies, depending on the number of vacancies, the could return. Until then, if the vacancies, depending on the number of vacancies, the offset of revenue to cost would not necessarily be as usual. So we can definitely do some more analysis on that, but we do know that with inmates down, unless we continue to hold positions vacant, the, the cost will not be, the cost recovery will not be as great.
Thank you, Ms. Keller. You got to look at your PowerPoint backup. All right, next slide, please. So how do we go about meeting this challenge, Judge Commissioners? To our, to our benefit right now, we have the strongest reserve position being the dollar amount of 92 million in the history of the county. In the past few years, we've refinanced our debt and had significant double-digit savings on those refinancings. We've done a pay-as-you-go on our CIP and operating equipment investments, so we've saved money by not financing those in the past, so that's to our benefit. And lastly, and I want to thank Commissioner Pettis for this idea a couple of years ago about establishing a percentage of our reserves as a budgeted reserves for emergencies. That was a great suggestion and court adopted that in its new policies, and we've got those reserves available and don't have to go and do a budgetary change to react to the emergency that we're under right now. Right now, we're using our current reserves and have not tapped our emergency reserve yet, and hopefully we don't have to resort to that. But it's nice to know that in the event we need to, they're budgeted, they're available and ready for use. With that, if there's no questions on this slide, I'm going to turn the next couple of slides over to Ms. Keller.
Okay. So before we start discussing the amount to cut from our budget, I want to go through these next few slides, show you a spreadsheet that we created to help us track where we're at. This is the part where we're really going to get into what number do we have to start with as far as cuts, and then how we're going to go about those cuts. So the first, this slide here shows items that the court would, would like the court to go through to prioritize, if any of these are on the table for potential delays or cuts. Miguel, can you flip to the next slide for me? We're not going to go through them yet. We're going to come back to them. This slide includes items that staff has gone through and we recommend that you consider cutting now first. And then the next slide, Miguel, can you show them the next slide? This is an example of the spreadsheet that we're going to pull up here shortly to start entering any changes on that would show us what, how much cuts we need and how much, whatever cuts the court makes will whittle away at the amount of cuts that we need departments to make. Our goal is to try to, we would like to see us get down to approximately 3%, 3% to 5% for departments to cut. So actually 3%, I believe is our goal for departments. So what we would need from the court to get down there is we would need, if you agree on, we're going to talk about our recommendation, you'll see on this spreadsheet where there is a reduction of approximately $2.2 million from the total cuts, where I'm projecting that we could get federal funding to help with revenue offset. This is an extremely conservative number as far as how much federal funding we could get. However, so far, the rules have not allowed any federal funding to be used for offsets. Congress is supposed to be back in session on May 4th, and we've been told, and I've been in communication with our local Congresswoman, who has said they're working diligently to get state and local government revenue offset funding in that next package. But I'm wanting to be very conservative here, because if this funding doesn't materialize, 2.2 million is an amount we could generally cut without too much difficulty. And not that it wouldn't be difficult, but it wouldn't be nearly as devastating as if we budgeted for a larger federal offset. And additionally, we would, we would, I'm sorry, we would be looking at, if we did, I'm sorry, if we did get the funding, we would be looking at being able to use a larger percentage of it for FY 21, where we actually expect larger reductions in revenue. So with that, Miguel, can you go back up to the top slide? I'm sorry, then, yes, that slide there. So, next one. So if the court would agree that the 2.2 million with, using a $2.2 million offset, that would give us a target number to work towards today, and I'd like to hear any discussion from the court on the concept of using $2.2 million in federal offset. One more thing, we have done, heard some calculations based on language that was being discussed for the next federal stimulus package, and the projection is that El Paso County could get as much as $74 million from that package with an allowance that it be used to help with revenue offset. So any, any comments or thoughts the court has about the, our approach of using approximately $2.2 million?
And I'm sorry, Bettie, that 2.2 comes from where?
That, what we're proposing is that instead of trying to cut the entire 13.4 million, is that we aim for 11.2 million, assuming that we could get a 2-point, we could get a federal stimulus package, and we would use 2.2 million of it to offset our revenue this year, our revenue loss.
2.2 million of the federal stimulus package?
Yes, sir.
And, once again, why, why that particular number, and how did you arrive at 2 million or not 2.1 or whatever? Just so I can understand the rationale.
Yes, yes, sir. So if you can go back to the down two slides, Miguel, I don't know how easily we can see this on here, but what I did was, I did not want to rely on the $74 million number, because it's not finalized. And I don't know if that $74 million number takes into, into account any distributions that would go to the city. So what I did was I took the allocation that we are supposed to be receiving under the First Cares Act, and I took that, that dollar amount, I subtracted $5 million right off the top for expenses that we will be incurring if we have, that, we haven't incurred 5 million yet, but I took 5 million right off the top for potential expenses. And then I took 10% of the amount remaining. So the amount that remained was $21,900,000, and I took 10% of that to be considered for this fiscal year. And again, I'm being very conservative, because one, our expenses could exceed 5 million, and two, I believe we need a greater portion of that revenue offset for FY 2021.
And the, the, the 74 million, Betsy, is that, it's far from finalized, is that what's, in, in, in the bill, it's, this, that's being passed today, or?
No, sir. That, I understand, that would be in the bill, the next version that's being discussed for May.
Oh, okay, so it's a very hypothetical figure.
The 74 million, in my opinion, is not something that we should, I, I would like to be very conservative on there. And again, on the 2.19 million, if we needed to come back, if that did not materialize, it's a lot easier to come back and offset 2.19 million versus even 7 million if we said 10% of a $74 million package.
And, and when will you know for sure what, how much the county, I guess, will get from the, the current CARES Act?
Well, the current CARES Act, the current CARES Act, we are, we are slated for the 20, over 27 million. But the rules have been issued yesterday, there were, some guidance was issued, and it is very specific that it cannot be used for revenue offset. There, there was discussion that those rules may be reconsidered, but at this point, the rules do not allow us to use that for revenue offset.
Also, we did hear this morning that a couple of other large urban counties have just received their CARES funding today. Treasury is checking our, our bank several times a day to see if ours comes in this week. We're anticipating to get it in the next few days.
Wally, and Betsy, if we cannot use it for the offset, what can we use it for?
We can, we can use it for multiple things. We can use it to help with the costs that we're incurring on the homeless shelter and the transportation. We can use it for the PPE cost that we're incurring. We can use it for the small business loan fund that we created. We can use it for the daycare fund. There's, there's multiple things we can use it for. We just have to make sure it's compliant with the guidance.
Okay, and I guess my next question would be moot, but does it get us closer to the bridge between what we've already received and what we can use that money for and what we are anticipating in the next couple of weeks?
It does not, it does not help us with, it, it does help us, let me back up. It helps, it helps us tremendously with all we're doing as a response to the public health crisis. So, and, and I, I'm finding that I'm frequently learning of areas where we have great need in our own operations, where we need PPE in places that I had not thought of. We need, we, there will be places where we'll need some facility modifications to, as a response to the public health crisis, barriers and protections, things of that nature. So there are a lot of areas for opportunity and expense that this will offset. And of course, our assistance to the community during this time is enormous. One item Commissioner Pettis and I were discussing yesterday was the testing in Tornio, and whatever we need to do to help the health office make that available. That's an area where this funding would be, would be useful.
Okay, perhaps, is there any, any type of funding that is needed to get the court back into our offices and where we can have physical meetings with the possibility of using some, some funding for PPE or some modifications to the offices or the courtroom itself?
Yes, sir. This funding could be used for that purpose.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Pettis?
Betsy, I guess on that, on that point of testing, I, I mean, and then I assume the city's going to get a whole bunch more, because, because that's just the way the, the bill was, was crafted, because they have, of the population totals. I mean, have, has there been conversations regarding things like testing, which, which I think is most pressing, you know, not just for our community, but for, for, for all communities, you know, throughout the state and throughout the country?
Are you, okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question. Is the city looking at using a portion of this funding for testing?
Well, well, I mean, I guess we should both be looking, collaborating to, to see if we can maximize, you know, to see if we can get additional tests, right? Because the city is, is getting probably way more than what, what the county's currently getting, right?
Yes, sir.
And, and I mean-
Yeah, I think, I think the city's getting close to $118 million from this, from this first package. And, I mean, I agree with you, Commissioner Pettis, I mean, we need to coordinate with them, and it seems to me that any money that we spend on testing should probably be done in the unincorporated areas, because the city, in my opinion, should be, should be in, in charge of doing what's, paying for what's happening inside the city limits.
Right. I mean, it's so, I mean, it's, I mean, it's great that, that the, the funding can be used for anything that, well, it seems to, anything COVID-related that the county has already done, I guess, to make the county whole, but, but I guess we should also be looking at, you know, where are there large gaps? And, and I think one of the largest gaps remains in the area of testing. Again, I think it's, it's an issue of procurement and other things, but, you know, can we work collaboratively with the city since they're getting also a lot of, you know, a significant amount of funding to, to ramp up testing in the community, both, not only for the diagnostic testing, but then also the antibody testing and other things that, like that.
Betsy, so for clarification, you know, we can see what, what's, you know, in the future, what are some of the things that we might need and, and be able to fund? The reason I say that is because yesterday, to my surprise, UTEP has a lot of testing ability, the ability to test hundreds at, at one time, and they've been pretty much unable to do so because they're, they don't have CLIA certification. And it's been very frustrating for Dr. Kirsten of getting some kind of attention. So I was able to put him together with, with Sintron, Jacob Sintron, and it's just sort of sad that he's had to go through some loopholes. But one of the things for the CLIA certification is that there might be a possibility that they move all their equipment at, to UMC in order to be under the umbrella, the CLIA umbrella under UMC, and that obviously requires some cost and some, some additional resources. But I think it's a, a great opportunity for UTEP to come into the picture. Dr. Kirsten is the Dean of Science and has some amazing background in this area. So is that the kind of, that we're looking forward, is this a kind of initiatives and opportunities that can be funded through this money?
Yes, sir.
That'd be great. Wendy, I'll, I'll keep you posted on that. Dr. Kirsten was, went yesterday to, to UMC to see the facilities and how it works and, but I think it's going to be a huge, and I'm glad, you know, something that the county would be doing as, as our contribution to increase the testing. He can actually test immediately, like the rapid test, but not like, in there, the rapid test, it's one-at-a-time kind of thing where he could test a, a lot of, at the same time. And the only problem is that he has all that ability there at UTEP. The facility is excellent for that, but the CLIA certification is what holds them back. So they're going to see there's some kind of collaboration between the two.
That is definitely something we could partner with the city on, because the city would also benefit from that additional testing capacity, I'm sure. We'd need to work with Chief Rodriguez, and I'd work with Mr. Gonzalez and, and Jacob to see how we could partner together.
Yeah, I'll keep you posted as we go forward.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
But when it, when it, when it comes to testing, I mean, it seems as though, because of how the funding was allocated, you know, due to the, the population ratios, I mean, the, the city should really ramp up then testing for, for the amount of population that it got, received funding for, and we should really focus on, on testing it as the, with the amount that we got funding for, and then work in collaboration also with UMC to see whatever, essential in article that, that hospital districts, I think, are being considered for additional funding in, in the current bill that's being passed today. But-
Commissioner, on that same note, former County Judge Rubin Voat reached out to me as well to look to see what expenses UMC is incurring in operations for the county at the jail related to COVID, so we can also add those. Obviously, the county pays UMC as part of our contract, but, so that we can identify any of those expenses that we would not have had otherwise if it had not been for COVID-19, to include in our reimbursement tracking for, for COVID-19 expenses. Wally and our grants team are frequently reaching out to departments, and we have established a specific line item where we're trying to code the majority of expenses through that line item, so that we can easily track all of these costs for reimbursement, whether it's a community expense that we're engaging in, such as the lift fund, or whether it's the daycare, which would also be a community-based program. We're, we're tracking all of these costs very closely for that funding.
And, and when will we know, when will we know how much ultimately the county, county receives?
Well, we've done the math, NACO has done the math. We believe we will receive the 27.3 million. We should know, I understand from Governor Abbott's press conference last week, the money is being funded- We should know, I understand from Governor Abbott's press conference last week, the money is being funded through the state. The state had received half of the funding early last week with the intention to receive the remaining of the funding. They were just waiting on the Treasury guidance, which came out yesterday. And then as Wally mentioned, guidance came out yesterday and funds are starting to be sent to local governments as of, yes, or as of today. So we, we expect to see the funding fairly quickly and we'll know if we're, if we're going to be given all of it upfront and then we have to track our expenses, or whether we're going to have to submit our expenses to be funded.
And, and when it comes to procurement, you know, that's obviously an important part of, I, I suspect when the various political subdivisions throughout the state, throughout the country get this allocation. Again, procurement's going to be another issue where everybody's hunting for the same types of things, especially like when it comes to PPE. Has there been any effort to, to coordinate that, whether through NACO, whether through Texas Conference of Urban Counties, whether through TAC, anything like that?
There, there may be some efforts in that, but I will tell you, even where there's coordinated efforts, there have been cases even for the county where our shipments have been intercepted by the federal government. So the real, one of the real collaboration pieces we need to work through is also with the federal government. So it's not just like a regional or a state effort. We had, we had PPE on order that was, that was intercepted by the federal government, by FEMA. So the challenge is not, I, I, I don't want to be overly optimistic, but I believe our purchasing has been able to secure supplies for like masks and gloves of things of, and, and even gowns. The, some of the real challenges have been in chemical-type products that I've seen. But there, I, I do not fully know what all is being coordinated at a, at a regional or a state level. And I don't know, Judge, if you've heard any of those conversations on your calls with the other counties.
As far as what the, I'm sorry.
Like going together to buy a large supply of PPE versus competing against each other for PPE?
No, that hasn't, it's almost like it's, it's so difficult to, to manage that and, and the differences in their demands. That that's what I think. I, I'll just, I apologize, but I just got the word from the county judges at Dallas, received 240 million, Travis 61 million, Harris 426 million this morning. And so just wanted to, to share that. Sorry, got distracted.
It's okay. It sounds like they're just releasing the funds to counties and we will have to basically be audited or back up and document how we use them within the guidelines that they've provided.
Yeah, I'll follow up with them to see what, you, what restrictions or what are some of the conditions of the money they're receiving. But yeah, I haven't heard much of, like I said, what I've heard is the complexity of coming together. And then, you know, sort of the distribution and so forth, but I, you know, I can follow up as well because we're in constant communication, but there, that hasn't been one of the conversations that we've had.
I mean, I'm sure you've seen that other, you know, the governor of Maryland and I think the mayor of Chicago had to very secretly acquire PPE and other essential, and testing from foreign countries so to avoid it from being intercepted by the federal government. I mean, I don't know if that's something, you, you know, we can explore, but that's unfortunate that, you know, the, when, when we talk about the challenges of procurement, that's what the lengths of other states and other political subdivisions are going through.
Okay, Miguel, do you want to go back? Are you all, do you, would you all like to go back and discuss? How are you, are you okay with us using the 2.19 million federal offset? Or would you like to change it or eliminate it?
My thoughts are, I think, I think that number's okay.
Yeah, I think, I think it's okay too. Just, we just, you know, we're, we're early, we're, we're, we're early in this process. You know, we don't know how long, you know, this, this, this is going to last or how long we're going to incur in sp, expenses and, at least from what I've seen in the news, that, that there doesn't seem to be much of an appetite to, to assist states or something with, or, or local political subdivisions with revenue loss. So we've got to just preserve the amount that we get for, for as long as possible and making sure it addresses the, the most need. That's the only caution that I would say that as, as we, as we look into these, as we, as we look into the federal funding.
And I do, I, I will be asking each of you, one of the, one of the messages I received yesterday, and I think I've forwarded these to the court, or forwarded it to the court. One of the messages I received at, from our federal member of Congress, from the House, Representative Escobar, was that we still, you know, that there's, it's still on the table, but there definitely needs to be support. And that all we can do, so I'll be asking you all to call or write or send emails to our federal delegation and even to the White House to encourage support for this item. For this, for this allowance of a portion of federal funding to be used to help with revenue offsets.
Betsy, the numbers that you presented right now, hello? It's Commissioner Robinson. Betsy, the, the, the numbers you present, these are preliminary numbers, correct?
Yes, sir. These are the numbers that we need, that we're, I'm sorry, go ahead, sir.
Oh, go ahead. I'm listening.
Okay, these are the numbers that we're projecting currently. I will tell you, I've been in discussions with Ed Dion. He is very cautious about these numbers because this is purely an estimate. We don't know, we're, we're going to be closely monitoring how things are going as we get each report and any other indicator of what's going on in the local economy. And so these are all estimates, and they're very difficult estimates. You know, every budget is always an estimate, but normally it's in a very stable environment that we have better predictability for. And in here, we're in a very volatile environment and a lot is depending on how long areas stay in shelter in place. How, how rampant the disease is spreading, things of that nature. So these are very preliminary estimates and we're trying to be careful without overreducing our budget.
But if we ask the question, like, what are preliminary? Because it, it could go up or down.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. So if you all are okay with that number, we'd like to go back to, yes, sir?
Okay, Betsy, but just to be clear, so, so where it says still needed 13.4 million, that, that's, that's the revenue reduction, right? And, 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 and I guess since the, am I correct in that?
That's before we take off the 2.19 million.
In totality?
Yes, sir. And we're actually expecting revenue to be reduced by 17 million overall. But we have that 4.9, 4.3 million revenue increase that was unprojected because of the taxing and the, the tax bill is actually being higher than what they were originally estimated. So it, it nets out to the 13.4 in our estimate now.
Okay, but, but I mean, now, now tell me if I'm, okay, but I think we have to be very careful because I think the, the federal government's intent, at least for this, they made it very clear that this tranche of funding was, was not intended for revenue reimbursement. It's, now, we can certainly use it for COVID-related items that we have sort of gone above and beyond what we didn't anticipate in spending, but it wasn't to offset fees and other things that, that we've lost and other revenues that we've lost. Is that correct? Is that fair?
That is correct. And the, the 2.19 is an estimate that if in May we receive an allocation that's allowed, that's where we would use the 2 point, we would get the 2.1 here. If for some reason that does not materialize, we will have to come back and reassess where we're at as far as revenue decreases to, to look at where else we would be able to cut this. I will tell you, there are other areas, and, and as you, as we go through these areas today, I believe we have, this is like an initial phase. We have other areas where we could come back and look at additional phases. So you're going to hear me talk about today that I want to give a lot, I want, I want the court to give a lot to the departments as far as the authority to make their reductions. So, but before we ask county departments and elected officials to cut their budgets, we've identified several areas initially. Then we want to give a lot of authority and empowerment over to our departments to make up the difference. And then if we need to come back and make up the 2.19, we can work on some additional across-the-board policy changes and additional departmental budget cuts to make the, the total needed.
It, it's just the, the way that the slide is worded with the, you know, amount of words that like still needed 13.4. You know, like I said, considering I think what the federal government intended this funding to be used for, you know, for COVID-related things, and again, for anticipated needs, as, as we mentioned, like testing just being one example. I, I think that, that needs to be our focus. I mean, because it, it gives the appearance right now that, that the main focus is, is revenue, is recapturing the revenue that was lost, right? But that's, that's really not the intent of the funding.
Let me just, okay, this is our budget spreadsheet today. This has not, this is not geared towards the current tranche of funding we're getting. This is geared towards the budget reductions we need to make right now for FY '20. And just like what we do during budget, this is like a, this is a register. And so we're going to go through the next, the other couple of slides with all of you to see what projects you all are willing to reduce or suspend. Before we get down to an amount, each one of these has a formula behind them that will go down as you all make changes. And so when we, our goal is to get down where it says still needed towards the bottom, and right now it shows 11.2 million. Our goal is to get that down around $5 million, if, if the court would be willing to work with us, to get that down to around $5 million. Then we would turn over the additional amount needed to departments to continue to make reductions. And that would get them down to cutting about 3%. And the, the reason why our goal is to get them down to about 3% is with our current financial position, we believe that those kinds of reductions can be made without major layoffs, major impacts to staffing. The, the, so we're, we're working on trying to minimize personnel impacts. There will still be, and I want to be very clearly, clear about this, something you will not see on the other two slides is, you, you won't see where we're asking specifically across the board for executive or elected official pay reductions, personnel pay reductions, furloughs or layoffs. But that doesn't mean that those items are not on the table. It means we're allowing this first round of these types of reductions to be at the department level. And as we finish today, the remaining amount of cuts that are needed will be sent to departments to reduce their current fiscal year budgets. To meet those cuts, they will have to evaluate all of these areas, like how they're going to achieve them. But a 3% across-the-board budget reduction is not going to result in significant amounts of personnel impacts. And when I say significant, we, when we've been through this before, we had to lay off significant numbers of employees. So I'm not expecting to hit that in this first round of reductions for FY '20. We want departments to have the opportunity to use whatever reductions that they choose to, to, in their evaluation of their operations, to meet that percentage budget reductions that's needed, whatever we are able to whittle that down to today. And I, I've already had, for example, I've already had a discussion in my department, my, my departmental budget, that one of the first things that I'll do before I go ask the department to look at other areas of cuts is my own wages. I'll be recommending a reduction to my own wage to make, to help meet our department budget cut. So we want to allow departments that first opportunity and allow it to count towards their first cut for this fiscal year.
Betsy, I've got a quick question, Judge.
Go ahead, Commissioner Leon.
Betsy, does this take into account what we spoke about, we touched on a little bit last week or on Monday, the medical insurance, the employee's medical insurance shortage that we're anticipating?
This does not, this is not asking for that medical, we, we are not proposing a cut to the contingency fund for that. And this does not include an increase in cost for that either. I spoke again with Sam Trujillo and with Melissa after the meeting, and both of them are very optimistic that we will not need that funding. But we want to be, we're at that 60-day trigger mark, where we, moderate trigger mark, where we want to be prepared should things continue to decline.
Okay, but what we have is about 1.5 million that's looming out there. Is that the right number?
Yes, sir. And that's, that we would propose using contingency funds for.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. So if the court is in, in agreement, I'd like to go back to the slide where we have some staff proposed cuts. This slide right here. Go back, Miguel. This slide right here. This right here, if you all agree with our proposal, will reduce that total number of cuts needed. We do not have these cuts in there now. So one of the first things we would like to propose is that we suspend and defer all of the reclassification or compensation studies that we currently have budgeted. That is a savings of approximately $443,000 this fiscal year. These would resume once we were physically stable enough to consider them again. Do you want to discuss each one, or do you want me to go through all of these?
My, my, my thoughts are, let's go through all of them.
Okay. So then the next item that we would propose is to suspend all non-essential travel for the remainder of the fiscal year, which would be a $350,000 cut to the budget. Suspend all of our 60311 operating equipment that's not already encumbered, so it's not already in the process of being purchased, which would be a reduction of approximately $1 million. On this one, we do need to get department agreement to do it for elected officials. But that is a, a pretty significant reduction of $1 million. And then we could all, we've also done a very close review of our general fund CIP allocation. We looked at what's available, what's unallocated and what projects are not going to be, come to fruition this year. And we believe that we could reduce that, that particular fund by 2.5 million. Then also, these last two bullets relate to the remaining balance after we go through the other items. So these four bullets here would get us approximately just over $4 million in the reductions we need.
And Judge?
Go ahead.
What, on, on the, on the general fund, the CIP spending, I mean, I'm sure there were projects, were, were, was that already encumbered or were there projects that were already being identified for that? Or, or this was just 2.5 million that was, was still, had not been spent?
This, some of this was unallocated and some of this is where we went through and we evaluated all of the pending projects. And whether, you know, I mean, everything from six cents was left on the table to several tens of thousands of dollars was left on the table because the project came in much under budget. So all of those we looked, we went through, we swept all of those, and some of those we looked at how long the project had been on the table and whether it was really going to come to fruition. Wally, do you want to add any more to what, what we use to make up that 2.5?
So of, of this 2.5, 2 million of it currently has no project identification. It's unallocated and available and will not It's unallocated and available and will not impact anyone's operations. The other half a million, as Betsy mentioned, are for projects that have either been completed and we are going to sweep those funds, or it's projects that we've identified as, um, as late as our meeting yesterday that we held, that can be moved to a bond project and free up the CIP. So that's a pretty solid number without impacting, um, anyone's anticipated spending trends.
Additionally, I mean, we did leave a, um, we did not completely wipe this fund out either. We do know that there can be interim emergency requests that could arise that we would need some funding available to, um, allocate for those cases.
Okay.
But, but we believe these four items will be a major, um, a major offset to the total amount needed before we get into the projects. And, and I want to clarify something, um, about these projects. Every single one of these items that we're going to discuss on the other slide, every single one of them are something we needed. As you all know, we are, we are a very, um, economically and physically responsible community and county because we have to be. And so these aren't projects that are, um, unnecessary or we're doing for, um, you know, above and beyond need. These are all projects that are needed. But these particular four items are things that we think can make a reduction on what you all will need to assess on the previous slide, which are some very specific projects that were hard fought to get to and were, um, in, that we're in great need of.
And, and then Betsy, the, the 63, uh, 6,011 operating equipment, we, we used to have, it was the old 6204, uh, account that was for, for furniture. Are those two different funds?
I think this is exact same fund, where it's not just furniture, but it's like small, small purchases of like, um, products, purchases in departments for operating equipment that don't have to go through CIP.
Yeah, they are one in the same account, the old 6204.
So that includes furniture and other things that is allocated each department based on, uh, number of employees, I think? Is that what, how it was done?
It's a, it is a allocation of approximately 6 and 3/4% of their small equipment, um, inventory, so that they can replace things over about an 11, 11 to 12-year span. So this proposal would, um, freeze that from, uh, occurring the balance of this year and would have to put that off for a couple of years. We've had, we've had a lot of great progress. Departments are maintaining and replacing their assets. This would defer it for at least the rest of 2020 and, and probably something we need to take into consideration for 2021 as well, until we, uh, till we bend this fiscal recovery curve.
Okay.
And I want, all of these items, if we were to get a federal allocation to offset revenue, all of these items are things that could easily be re-implemented at that time. But these are also things that, um, are across-the-board reductions to offset all these other areas of, of significant need.
Okay.
So if the court's okay with these four, we'd like to add them to the spreadsheet to show you, um, how that reduces our total number and what it does to the cuts departments would have to make. Would that be okay with the court?
I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, sir. So, um, Miguel, the bottom four columns that have an amount in columns or rows that have a mountain column C, if you could copy those over to column B? And I apologize, that bottom number should be 2.5 million. We increased it by half a million yesterday.
Uh, CIP capital?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Okay, now on the slide where we talk about, um, going back, well, actually, before you leave the spreadsheet, Miguel, um, if you could go down, you'll see that right now we still need 6.9 million to get to our goal. What I'm wanting to get that 6.9 million number down to is a little bit less than what you see. I want to get the percent required down to about 3%. And to do that, if you can go up, Miguel, we need to get that total cut number, um, up a little bit higher. Wally, do you have the exact number?
So the total, the total cut number needs to come in to hit 3% at the two, uh, excuse me, 5.25 million, five and a quarter. About another, a little less than another million dollars.
Okay, so if on the, if we could go back over to the slides and go back up to slide number 10, one more up. Out of here, we need about a million dollars out of all of these items listed on this slide. Now, some of these, I think, are easy ones, easier ones that we could ask the court to allow us to reduce. I'm going to start down with the second one down, the traffic calming study. This $125,000, we have this in the budget, it's been in there for quite some time. And what Norma and Jose, um, have talked to me about is that we have done a lot of these measures in-house. We did not think we, uh, were going to be able to do a lot of this in-house, but there's a lot of things we've done in-house to start addressing traffic calming concerns. Everything from in our designs to our signage, um, things that we've done ourselves. And again, this has been on the, in the budget for several, um, fiscal years, and we have not spent any of this funding. We would like to propose to eliminate that. And if the court's not willing to eliminate it, we'd propose to suspend it at least for the next, um, for this fiscal year and for next fiscal year. Um, I'll keep going through the other ones that I think would be, yes, sir.
This does not take, take out the consideration of, of emergency situations, right? If we, if we have emergency situations regarding the coming devices?
I'm sorry, sir, you cut out.
If we have emergency situations, we still be able to accommodate those, right?
Um, anytime there's a situation, um, anytime we have a situation where we need to get in and look at an area, yes. But this generally is, um, things that we are doing now in, in our, um, transportation design to try to implement more traffic calming.
And we had, had that same question of Ms., um, um, Norma, uh, Rivala Palacios yesterday, and, and she assured us that removing this will not impact her ability to continue implementing those where needed.
Okay, good. Very good.
Betsy, um, is there an accompanying, um, some type of document that, uh, I think we talked about, and maybe I just missed it, but where, where, where we look at, you know, we're going to do X, but this would be the impact, um, on, on, on not doing or not taking that initiative. For example, if, let's say it's travel, then what kind of an impact does it have in our relationship with, with other counties or with some of the things that we have to do, certifications and so forth? Uh, so sort of, uh, maybe the same approach of looking at essential versus non-essential and, and having a, a better understanding of, you know, what's the outcome? Uh, on our budget, we're looking at this now, but well, what's the outcome going forward? And then do we have, are we accumulating any situation where then, you know, we have that balloon effect at the end where we're having to catch up and, and then having some difficulty, so. I think if, uh, uh, you know, there's a, it's called a, you know, scenario forecasting. And if, if we do certain things, what's going to be the impact? And then where are we going to be, uh, with our budget that we're having to catch up and ballooning that kind of situation a year from now, uh, half a year from now or whatever? And I'm sure it's, it's in what you're discussing. Uh, but if, if there was a way that, um, that we could have a, a, a document that we could look at, uh, both, you know, this is a sacrifice that we're going to make, uh, but uh, is it really going to impact us later in the budget for not doing that? Uh, you know, the example, obviously, we wouldn't do that, but let's say we, we decided to slow down on maintenance. Uh, but then we have, uh, issues on, on having to do overhauls on our, on our cars or having to do certain things that. So I would like just a, a perspective of, of what, what are we dealing with as we move towards these, um, these line items with respect to the collateral effects of, of that? So just tell me a little bit about that, and maybe you've already gone through the process, and maybe there's documentation that you've sent us, but, um, uh, just want to hear your thoughts on that.
Judge, you, you said, you said cause, cause and effect.
Exactly, yeah. Thank you, Commissioner.
So Judge, we have had discussions about cause and effect, but we have not prepared documentation in the, in the urgency of turning this around quickly. Because, you know, in our normal budget process, we have a lot of time to go through really in-depth procedures. This has been so sudden and in, as far as it coming to, um, El Paso County and hitting us, well, maybe everybody should have seen this coming. Um, in, in the need for reducing the budget and what we're seeing as far as like shutdowns and things of that nature and unemployment claims, um, we have not done as thorough of a vetting as we normally do for a budget process. We have had conversations, and I'll give you an example, on the paving, the first one. Norm and I had, have had conversations about what does that do? How will that impact us? Where would we cut this? And what would that, what would that do to our overall road system? So we've had conversations about that, we've been evaluating that, but we have not created documentation to that in the, in the urgency of this, um, reduction. Because the longer we wait to make these reductions, the less time we have to recoup them over. And so we will be glad to give some documentation on that and bring back that kind of information to the court. But I can, I can today tell you some of the conversations we've had and about how it would impact these areas.
No, I, I totally understand, and I'm sure the commissioners understand, but whenever there's a, a discussion that you feel it's critical to our decision-making, that, uh, you could bring it forth, that if we're making a decision that, that in your discussions we're concerned about, uh, so I'm not saying every single one or every single situation, but if there's some out there that, that would help us not be blinded to making a decision that we will have to deal with later on, and, um, obviously our constituents, you know, would, would expect that from us, that we would understand, uh, what kind of impact we would have later on. I just, uh, you know, been in organizations and the catch-up, uh, is really critical and, and some of the decisions that, that we made that we didn't think through, um, uh, you know, later on were big, uh, horrible situations that we could have avoided and maybe looked at other things that were not, uh, having the collateral, negative, adverse impact that we would have. So just if, if there's any conversation that worries you about how we're going to deal with it in the future, uh, you could incorporate it to, to these, um, line items. But I understand the urgency. Commissioner Pitts?
That's a great point.
Go ahead, Betsy.
What I was going to say is, um, I will tell you, before we brought these forward, we had lengthy conversations even, um, up to last night with, um, I'll, I'll give you another example. One of the areas we talked about was, um, just yesterday, was, uh, using funding from the, the program that was just created this last fiscal year for the ongoing, um, replacement program. Something we have been in dire, dire need for, for a very long time for basic operating supplies for departments, um, such as bulletproof vests, tasers, um, steno machines. We know that these things wear out. We know that it's an ongoing, really, it should be considered operating capital. And it took, it's taken us years to get that funding established. We also talked about, um, wages. How we have worked so hard for so long at a lot of political capital on part of Commissioner's court to get to the point that we're at today. So our proposal on all, like those types of changes, it's too hard to reverse. It's, it's so difficult that we're reserving those types of changes for a very, um, a much later phase of complete dire, you know, situations. And then on these, we do know that there's some operating, um, impacts. So for example, like the paving. We know that we're still not where we want to be fully on the paving level, but a 10% reduction for this year and possibly next year, we could, I've talked to Norma about how much we could handle in a makeup. We've had to do 100% makeup one year, and it was really difficult on our, on our resources. A 10% reduction over, um, an 18-month period, we believe we can realistically make up over the following two years. So we, we have evaluated that, and we've evaluated how difficult it is to reinstate some of these, um, particular measures. Because nobody ever remembers that you've cut them. They, they look at it like a brand-new, um, allocation.
Thank you, Betsy. Commissioner Pitts?
Go ahead, Betsy, if you were going to finish.
I was just going to say, we'll be glad to, to provide more information and documentation on, um, these and what their full impact will be.
Thank you, Betsy. Commissioner Pitts?
Well, you know, and, and to the, to the judge's point, and, and, you know, e- e- each of these items, you know, let, you know, we're, we're, we're in an emergency situation, you know, and, and I know you all have worked very hard to, um, bring this forward very quickly and, and, you know, as possible. I, I don't think we should be fretting over what do we eliminate versus what do we suspend? I mean, if the traffic calming study is something it is that you found that you could eliminate, fine, but I think really our goal in this emergency situation should be just to suspend whatever we can for the remainder of the fiscal year that doesn't adversely impact, um, operations that, you know, to a point that's, um, where we're not delivering, um, you know, the mandated services to, to our community. But, um, it, it, you know, I mean, would that make more, I mean, it, it, I'm, I'm fine with everything. I think everything needs to be on the table. You know, as we look at this, because it is an emergency situation, but wouldn't it, would it be easier on you if it's just, if all of these items were just suspensions for the remainder of the fiscal year? And then the decision to eliminate would come then during budget time, once we get more information, and we'll, we'll have a better idea of how, uh, you know, the, the, the COVID outbreak is, how, how it's developing. Hopefully, it's under control. You know, rather than, than having to, to decide, you know, what to eliminate or what to suspend, I think the suspension is just a much easier decision for the remainder of the fiscal year, considering where we are in the fiscal year.
And I, and I agree, the only caveat I'd like to make is that, um, you know, there's a tendency that, uh, instead of looking at revenue opportunities and looking at some of the things that could, that could get us moving in the right direction, there's a tendency to slide into, to our employees at every organization. And so I'm, I'm, I'm just, to me, with my background in HR, you know, it, we, I, I feel that we strongly have to show our workforce, that we've done everything possible to look at revenue, to look at cuts and don't impact them before we go in sort of like blanket, okay, let's just do X percent of, uh, on, on employees. Uh, and, and, and they, they really, you know, most of the time, uh, we make the wrong decisions sometimes, and they take the, the brunt of, of the decisions or things hit us externally and they take the brunt. And I just want, just to make sure that, that we're looking at everything that we could do uh, before we feel that, that we look at it sort of saying, okay, well, it makes sense to cut back X amount. Uh, I would like a more of an analysis of, of what we could do, uh, immediately and, and just to give confidence to our, our employees. You know, we talk so much about their welfare, we've done so much, and Betsy discussed that, and we've worked so hard on. We've done so much and Betsy discussed that. We work so hard on on a lot of different things. And we have a very motivated and the end result of what we've done. I think we have an extremely motivated workforce and and you could see the the caliber of of people we have. The the way we handle things, the efficiency, um, it's just an amazing workforce. So I just want to keep the integrity of our of our concept to to continue to strengthen our workforce. But showing them that we're very conscientious about looking at all the other different dimensions. And it just not just throwing in the dimension of a percentage of people that or or reductions of benefits or anything like that. And and it doesn't have to be a long, lengthy process. It's just that we show that we are looking conscientiously and once again thoughtful of every dimension and quickly. And if it takes working more hours and if it takes, you know, we we owe it to our community and to our our employees. To to make sure that we are going in the right direction. But also that because we don't make the right decisions, because we weren't aware of the impact it would have later on. That it might impact the the employees later on as well. If we don't make the right decisions and we find that that we cut something off where it's going to balloon on us later on. We we start looking once again at maybe some of the of the things that we can look at at our workforce and 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 sort of limit. Um, s- some of the strong, because this this Commissioner's Court has been extremely focused on on a workforce. That is motivated, highly motivated, paid properly and so forth. So anyway, that's uh, you know, my 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 focus on that I've done throughout my my career. And that is, let's look at them last, uh, but if that takes, uh, doesn't have to have a long haul or weeks at a time. Is just quickly allow our employees to know that we've we've tried to look under every possible stone. Before we think that um that the that we go in the workforce route, so.
And and I hear you, Judge, completely uh uh agreeing, and I think that staff's intent now, Betsy, and correct me if I'm wrong. Um, but I think, I mean, you you all came up with a list very quickly. Um, that that minimizes, I guess, that that the this impact. And I guess what you're what you're asking of us, at least from this list right here, is to um. You know, to 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 suspend these for for the fiscal year. But I guess what I'm saying is, as it as it pertains to these items, you know, uh. To to make to make this process easier so so we can look at other other things that or or see where where we are. To to me would make more sense, let's let's go ahead and suspend this for the remainder of the fiscal year.
Sure. Yeah, and I'm very confident that uh Betsy is is looking at that. I know how she operates and her team. So it was more of a reinforcement um about being conscientious about certain impacts that we might have later on. That you you might want to bring to the court and not leave you with that burden. Uh, to later on say, we didn't realize that we're going to have this impact. Uh, because we didn't get the right information. So just, I I know how you operate, so it was just more a reinforcement, Betsy. Uh, to if any conversation becomes critical, that we'd like to hear it here in the court. I think Commissioner Robinson, uh, I think you were gonna comment.
Yes, sir, Judge, I I fundamentally, I agree with what you just said. Yeah, but I think that to add to what you just commented, to add to that, before we talk about personnel and employees. I think on the top of the list should be the county judge and the and the commissioner. I for one, without hesitation, agree that we should take take the lead with 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 the reduction. So I have no problem with the reduction in my salary.
Absolutely.
As a matter of fact, I can write, I will write a check today for for whatever amount that we deemed appropriate for for reduction.
Thank you.
Judge.
And I will start with five thousand dollars out of my salary.
Well, thank you, Commissioner. Go ahead, Betsy.
Our goal really is, I I mean, our goal on all these items, when I we discuss reductions in these costs. We are not looking at existing personnel. So for example, where we're asking for a 10% reduction in our paving, this is purchasing of supplies. And and I I do hear what you're saying. I know you're not believing that, you know, saying that this is cuts to our existing personnel. But we looked at these from an approach to absolutely minimize impact to personnel. We know without a fa- without a doubt that our workforce is our most valuable asset. We know that the reason why we're in the position we're in is because of our other county departments and the Commissioner's Court. And everybody's coming to the table and working together. What what will happen is, as you all go through these and we add them to the spreadsheet. It's going to continue to lower that number that departments will have to cut. And as we lower that number, each department will then be able to make a determination, including members of Commissioner's Court. Who will be expected to also reduce their own budgets by that percentage. And not just Commissioner's Court, other elected officials as well. And each elected official can make that determination, each department head can make a determination of how they're going to meet that. And if they choose to cut their wages, that would count towards their department cut for this round. So if you'd like to go back to the list, um, I can provide some additional information. About how we discussed this would impact us going forward. And we can cover the entire list and then go back with each mem- and the court can provide us input. On each one of these or areas they'd like to see suspended for the rest of this fiscal year. On the paving, um, our budget for that is over $4 million. A 10% reduction would be $400,000. We would we would recommend the same thing for FY '21. Would then we would be asking to make those up in the following two fiscal years. One item of note on that that we've discussed is that there is belief that there will be infrastructure funding coming to local government. Um, as part of one of the federal stimulus packages. Again, we're not counting on that, but we do know that if we were to get that kind of funding, we could possibly make this up or re-implement it sooner. So um, what we would do on this one, we would continue our overlay. But what we would, the area we would reduce in is this would be a reduction in our chip cell program. So uh, we would just not buy as much material because we buy that on an as-needed basis. On the traffic calming study, um, it's $125,000. This was to be contracted out. We have not used this funding. Um, we'd asked them, does this be suspended for this fiscal year? By National Affairs Position, we have not filled this position at this time. Um, we have $75,000 specifically allocated. We were going to use another $25,000 out of contingencies to make up the full cost of this position. Um, but because it's not been filled and it's not been allocated to a departmental budget. We are um saying that this is something that the court could suspend this fiscal year if it wanted. The auditor study, G admin funding. Um, as you know, we're under a two-phase, two different section study. For um programs to enhance our operations where it comes to internal controls. And for the auditor to have for their his operations. In this particular fund, there was $60,000 set aside to supplement the study, the funding that's in the auditor's budget. The study that is for county department is in um a separate budget. And that project has already been awarded and work is already underway. But this is a a a separate fund that would be for Phase Two of the project that has not been awarded at this time. And if the court is willing, we would suspend this for the rest of the fiscal year. On the parks grant matches, we've been brought forward a couple parks grant matches this year. Um, that require big, they're big grants, but they require big matches on the county park. Um, when we look at our regional park plan, the next project on the regional park plan is desert acceptance. That is a $500,000 grant match. Um, what we do have, while we do have $500,000 um budgeted for this. We have $300,000 from the 2007 bond that can only be used for parks. That remains that we would like to use towards this match. We would leave $200,000 in the in the contingency account for the match, which is currently budgeted at 500. It would save us $300,000 by using that bond instead. Then the next one, um, this one, the San Felipe Off-Road Grant Match. We have 100K in this year and 100K in for next fiscal year. This is a very large grant. If we're not going to do it, we have to notify Texas Parks and Wildlife this week. They're giving us an option this week to back out of this grant if we want to. It does pull down a lot of funding, but it is um a very large match requirement. Then um, I don't have this on here because I just learned about it late yesterday. But we also have a uh grant match, I believe, reserved for Moms on Board. Um, we've been in communication with Moms on Board. They're struggling with their fundraising. Right now, because of the conditions that we're under right now, obviously, you can't have major events during this time. Um, they are asking that we evaluate and work with Texas Parks and Wildlife to see if we can get an extension on raising the match. So um, I don't have that one mentioned here, but just that is something the court could consider whether it wants to continue that project. The next item on the list is the cross-border survey. Um, we have $40,000 set aside for this particular survey. We know that the bridges and UTEP are doing some survey information. We have not um been able to raise the additional funding needed for a full-blown cross-border survey. Um, but, so we still have the money on the table, but this is something that the court could choose to suspend as well. We have $300,000 in the budget for the digital library program. Um, we have not hired, we have been out recruiting for a librarian. Um, but we have not made any, we have not begun a a hiring process as far as interviews and things of that nature. Um, the next item is the remaining HF-FI funds. Um, we had a discussion, we had a discussion this week about uh. Cutting or allocating this funding. This funding, if we allocated it, it would be used towards a grant match to help draw down. Um, a significant amount of funding to actually create an HF-FI coordinating center. Um, if we're going to do that project, we need to give um Economic Development to go ahead to do it right away. On Monday, the court discussed it. There was a little bit of uncertainty about whether to proceed or not. I'm sorry, it was actually, um, yes, it was Monday. Um, but this project, it one additional thing about the HF-FI coordinating center. It could help uh be a um center for also accessing for the community. Uh, certain types of benefits such as like the the supplemental nutrition program, the SNAP program, um, things of that nature. If you want to allocate it towards that grant match, we we'd be glad to move forward with that. Otherwise, it's something that we'd ask the court whether it wants to cut this fiscal year. And then the last item that we have on the slide is we've been closely analyzing our August 3rd um mass shooting fund. And what the needs are going to be this fiscal year. We believe we could cut $100,000 off of this fund this fiscal year, but it will need to be fully funded next fiscal year. We checked in with auditors yesterday on where we're at on um public defense costs. And we do believe we're going to need um funding from this line item to help cover the legal fees for this year. So we believe we could cut 100,000 now to help with our cuts, but it will have to be fully funded for FY '21. And again, we're asking that the court um review these and help us identify approximately another. One to 1.2 million dollars out of this list of items that we could suspend.
Well, li- like I said, I mean, considering this is an emergency situation and 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 this is a list that you all have put together. I I I mean, again, um, if we were to wrangle over what what's going to be eliminated. I think those discussions are more appropriate for for budget and and that'll help us once we get a better idea. Uh, of the situation of 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 how the spread is progressing. Um, uh, you know, hopefully, the the mitigation efforts have 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 taken effect and 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 we're seeing improvement. But I I don't see any problem with with suspending, just for the sake of time. Because otherwise, then we're going to have a very lengthy meeting of what to eliminate, what to. But it, I mean, you you, Betsy, I mean, you you and Wally tell me, I mean, it was just suspended for the remainder of the fiscal year. Um, and I think that, you know, I'm sure there's probably other things that that were passed in in the budgets. Um, that can be suspended for considering the the circumstance that we're in. I mean, isn't that just an easier decision for us to make that on on the suspension of these items?
Yes, sir, I'll I'll weigh in on that.
I think.
It is an easier decision for suspension, especially um as we get through the next um two to six weeks. We're going to have a much better indication as to how these estimates are going to play out. We'll have uh an indication on when we are going to get back to a normal book of business. And so the suspension in the FY '20 is is much easier to address. The consideration of a further suspension in '21 or removal from the '21 appropriations. So I I think it's appropriate, sir.
I wanted to to comment, Judge, if I can. You know, I I will, I understand, I I I understand the what what Commissioner Pitts is i- is saying and and. I agree for the most part, but I think there are a couple of items on here that we need to be careful about suspending. Because uh we we lose the opportunity to um have further beneficial financial impacts. And 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 bringing um more money into into the community. I mean, I I am, um, you know, I I also just wanted to to make the point that. Um, you know, a lot of a lot of the items on here, um, you know, I uh. Lot of lot of lot of the 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 projects on here that are that are that are being, uh, that we're asking to be to cut or or temporarily suspend. Um, ha- have have come out of work that my that my office has done and. You know, I'm I'm willing to to, I think, you know, make a number, a a number of concessions. Because of the because of the fact that we're in this um, the situation that we're in. Uh, but things like, um, you know, the binational affairs position and the and the library and the the cross-border survey. Um, and of course, the HF-FI, I mean, those those projects have have um required hours and hours. And and years of of uh staff work and 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 work on my office's behalf. And so I don't take lightly, um, you know, wanting to give up on some of these things. When I believe, you know, some of the other the other programs are 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 much easier and and um to. To to look at, uh, uh, I think, you know, like the the paving or the the traffic calming study. Or the um, the the desert acceptance, the park um grant match, I think that's an easy one. But um, you know, I I I feel like the binational affairs position is important. Um, you know, e- especially as we move forward and and trying to rebuild our economy here. Siakwad is is uh, um, and and our relationship with the authorities over there. Whether it's um the the economy or or whether it's coordinating when it comes to things like testing and healthcare and and and. Um, you know, things that are very pertinent to what we're going through right now. Um, I think, you know, we would be, we would be putting ourselves at a disadvantage if we if we didn't. Look at filling that position in the future. Now, I I'm 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 fine with with temporary suspend, temporarily suspending that. Because it seems that um right now, uh, it it's it it's it's it can be difficult to to um have those conversations. But I I think that, uh, you know, having that position would definitely be really, really very beneficial for us. Going into the future and 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 coming out of what we're doing. So I would like to, I mean, I I would like to advocate for not suspending it, but if we have to. Um, you know, that's something that that came out of our office and and that we worked on and that I'd be willing to. To to talk about suspending um. The the cross-border survey, I have no problem with suspending. Um, you know, that's something that would, that. Um, you know, that's something that would that um would entail, you know, going and and surveying people and and interviewing people in in person and having close contact. And so that's not something that I see can happen right now anyway. So that's not, that's not something that uh that causes me a lot of uh heartburn. Um but but I still think it 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 would be important for, you know, our um our economic development going, you know, in the future again, um trying to do everything that we possibly can to bolster our economy and and having something like that information that would be provided from something like that at our fingertips, I think, will only make our economic development efforts stronger. Um, when it comes to the the uh uh HFFI program, you know, we talked about this last week and we um, I had asked the 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 folks, um Dr. Leah Wiggemann and Gabriela Gallegos to put together a little more extensive presentation that we were supposed to hear on Monday um because I think there was a little bit of a lack of clarity and and maybe some confusion as to um, you know, what what this money would be utilized for and and the the real um, you know, the benefits of of of, you know, using a hundred and hundred and thirty-eight, hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars uh for a program that would be uh that would be infusing, you know, close to a million dollars in into our community. You know, one of the um uh the really difficult um positions that we're in right now is that we have um, we have so much more uh food insecurity throughout the state and within uh within our community, you know. I mean, because because of the fact that people have lost their jobs or unemployment. And I was just driving by the Kelly Food uh pantry yesterday. I would have to go into the to the courthouse and I and I drove by there and there was um a line of cars around the block uh over there off of Rio Grande and and um uh Campbell and and uh, you know, it it was very, very clear to me that people are are having having difficulties. And so, you know, this this um this program would would really help our our food system to to be bolstered. Uh, you know, it would help us invest in nonprofits and small businesses. We would, we would, it would help us strengthen our our food systems and the infrastructure. It would help us to expand uh SNAP enrollment and and close what they call the SNAP gap. We leave um ninety uh ninety-one million dollars a year on the table when it comes to SNAP. And, you know, if 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 we had, you know, a- a- additional SNAP coordinators or or folks working to help people uh enroll in SNAP and 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 you can just imagine the economic boon that that would bring into our community. It would help, I mean, bringing in ninety-one million dollars uh uh that that would be spent on in groceries and uh and food in our community. And then it would also help to relieve a lot of the pressure that our food bank is is seeing now um because of the increase in folks that that need those services. And so I think there's um, you know, a really great opportunity to to help, you know, stave off a lot of that increase in food security and help reduce it. I mean, uh after COVID nineteen, food insecurity has jumped from fifteen to to forty-two per fifteen percent to forty-two percent in Texas. Um and, you know, again, this is, this would just help us to, you know, improve the overall health in the community um in addition to to all of those benefits. So, you know, if we, you know, if we partner with um with uh UT Health and and um and and other local local partners uh to come up with with a match of of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we can bring in a million dollars through that UT student aid grant. Um and it's not, I mean, it would not just be for uh our HFFI program. As I'm saying, there are all these other benefits that would be included. However, you know, it would uh, we would continue to be able to uh expand our HFFI program uh and and utilize those resources to help monitor um and and do what we're already doing. Um, you know, we would have increased technical assistance. Um, it would reduce staff time for for prep work and compliance work. It would increase the reach of the program to um to more local small businesses. It would leverage uh committed funds to bring more grants and loan funding to to the county through the program and and offer food access and nutrition expertise to ensure that that the program is is impactful. Um, you know, and 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 so I I really think that we we should, we should um look at taking that that one off of the chopping block. I mean, I think we have, uh, I mean, if if we need to make up that a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, I mean, there's more money in our Economic Development Impact Fund that we can uh that we can transfer over, I believe. But let's not um, you know, lose the opportunity to bring in a million dollars uh to this community uh when it when it comes to having a healthy food system here in El Paso County. Uh so I I just wanted to bring that up um and 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 ask you all. Um, you know, I'm I'm and say, you know, I'm willing to to um make some concessions, you know, when it comes to a lot of the work that my office and I have done. But I I really feel that um that that's a, that's an important program that that's uh going to um, you know, in the context of what we're going through right now is is really uh something that's so important. Um and and we need to keep that in mind. I mean, austerity doesn't always equal fiscal responsibility. I think I brought, I I said that last week. I mean, um, we we do need to be austere, we do need to look at making cuts, but we also, when we're doing these cuts, we need to make sure that we're doing them as in the most responsible way possible. And I feel like um, you know, that a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars is gonna, you know, could turn into a ninety-one million dollar impact uh and return on investment in 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 our community could could help us get there. So um, I'd like you all to to consider, to consider that, please.
Judge.
Commissioner Robinson.
You know, uh, I I have a couple of questions. Uh, Betsy, Wally, uh, how many hours did you guys put in to 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 develop the budget that we're working with now? How many hours, how many days did you work on this budget?
Are these reductions?
No, 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 the budget, this is your budget.
Oh, month?
How how many, how many days and hours did you work on the cuts?
The last few months.
A lot. So you 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 you're very careful to base your, you 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 didn't arbitrarily select these, what these cuts?
No, sir, we're not being arbitrary.
You you made, you you made good judgment in selecting those those that essentially need to be cut.
So Commissioner, we listed these items as areas for cut. We're not, we're not asking that all of them be be cut, but we identified these areas of areas the court could cut. We do need approximately one point one million dollars in reductions off of this page.
Well, but but my point is there there are a lot of items that you're going to cut, that you propose to cut, that I would like to see not cut as well. And I imagine the other commissioners look at some that they they would not like to be cut as well. We got, we got to go, we got to cut somewhere. So my recommendation is go with the way that Betsy and the primary team made that proposed today.
Yeah, if if.
Judge.
If I if I may just add, add to that, um, uh, you know, I mean, I I, Commissioner, I I hear, I hear what you're saying, but if, you know, if we if we get into one item, you know, that 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 should be preserved, then that's going to trickle into other items. Um, and 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 I think just given, you you know, it's going to be very, it's very difficult, at least in my opinion, you know, to ask our departments to 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 make cuts, you know, when when there's, you know, there there's, you know, programs such as this, um, you you know, that we're we're not cutting, you know, but yet we're asking our departments to. And again, I want to make the distinction between cuts and suspensions. I mean, right now, we could spend a lot of time saying, you know what, let's just eliminate this altogether. But that's not what we're doing. I mean, we're saying suspend all of these things for the for the remainder of the fiscal year. The the San Felipe Park Grant, I mean, I think parks are 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 an important aspect of quality of life. With that two hundred thousand dollars, we're giving up eight hundred thousand dollars for an immediate grant match, if if I recall correctly. And and if you're saying for both fiscal year twenty and for twenty-one, we're looking, we're we're giving up, there there was, from my understanding, a million dollars every year, and that was a twenty percent grant match. So you're looking at two million dollars that, but that's the emergency situation that we find ourselves in, that that we've got to. But again, it's i- i- it seems very reasonable to me not to um eliminate or cut these items, but suspend them for the rest of the fiscal year, um considering that we're already approaching May um and and we're we're going to have to reassess all of these items um, you know, in 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 two months or next month or as as we begin the budget process.
Yeah, no, I I I I get that. I just wanted to point out, though, that 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 the 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 grant, the grant funding window for the HFFI program is is closed at the end of May, so, or in May. And so there's not going to be a suspension. It's going to be, we're losing, I mean, we're we're going to be leaving all of that, all of that money on the table. And I and 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 as I said before, I mean, how how are we, how are we even um, you know, why 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 would we think of think of um not not wanting to? I mean, listen, I mean, the a a park is a park, but but this is a, this is a uh a program that is going to help us solve the problem, problems that are being created by COVID. This is, this is uh money that we we are actually considering leaving on the table that could go to to help reduce the burden on our food bank. How many conversations have you had with our food bank? They're, they're struggling right now. Um, look at all the pantries, look at all the people in this community that are that are that are struggling right now to to put uh to put food on their table uh when when we have, you know, the opportunity to 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 increase, to 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 take a huge bite out of that ninety-one million dollars and 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 funding that we're that we're leaving on the table for for food food security. I mean, food insecurity, in my opinion, is one of the most important issues that we are going to be dealing with and and are dealing with right now. And and I think it is, it is unconscionable and very irresponsible of us to be leaving uh, you know, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the table that could help us to remedy such a a huge problem. I mean, it's it's, I mean, and if and if you look, I mean, this is a, this is a list of of suggestions. Um, and and I understand that, you know, our 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 staff went went uh through very meticulously to look at where we could cut. Um, but if you add up, I mean, if you add up all of the, all of the 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 suspensions or or the eliminations here that you're looking at or the cuts that you're looking at, it's 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 well over the million dollars that they're asking us to 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 deal with or 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 to to come up with, right? So uh, you know, and and as I said, why, let's, let's really consider continuing with the HFFI program uh with with that with that grant, helping with that grant match because there are, there are other funds within our Economic Development um uh impact fund that we can, that that, I mean, if you want to, if you want to cut from somewhere, then 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 cut from there. I mean, it's, I mean, it's all in the same, it's all in the same pot, but but why give up this program? I feel like we'd be cutting off our nose despite our face.
Well, if I could. Betsy, Betsy, can I comment? Uh, one other option is that the government has been extremely flexible in in uh in allowing us to to do certain things and not to adhere to certain agreements or deadlines and so forth. Uh, you know, it would be really good for us to look at the grant situations, those that we would lose by not being timely, as as Commissioner Stout has said. And and I agree, those we have to really look at because if they're not timely, uh, you know, that we lose them. And so one other option would be, is there an opportunity for an extension on those deadlines? Like I said, they have been and they conveyed that to us. We see that in mortgage agreements, contracts. Uh, so I'm not sure we're from a grand standpoint that they would be holding our feet to the ground on on certain deadlines uh with such a critical situation. But I agree with Commissioner Stout that one of the most critical things we need to look at is that, you know, leaving money, uh millions of dollars on the table uh because we won't address them or or be able to participate in them. And and those are the things that fall into that category that I said earlier that now it's going to be a burden on us, you know, a year from now, that they're still going to come for us, they're still going to ask us for for money, there's still going to be a lot of pressure. It's not like that part just goes away. And one of the things we've been very helpful is getting these grants and getting these matches the way we do. Uh, so I I think it's a critical to for us to see which ones we would lose by not participating in between now and uh during this fiscal budget and which we we don't, and then at least that's some other consideration. So but would you respond to that? And then Commissioner Robinson has a comment, but if you could respond to, have we made an effort to see if we could work with those deadlines?
Yes, sir. So um, one of the things that, there's a couple of things I want to say. One, like, for example, on the parks matches, they've reached out to us. They're giving us an extension right now. We've already committed to those grants. So we've already met the deadline to file for those grants. The the deadline has already passed. Those grants are closed, those are over. They're extending us an opportunity to back out of them. That's, that's what the state has extended on those particular grants. On the HFFI one, um, I would propose that we consider something different. I would propose on the HFFI one, if it's going to help me, i- i- and this is something we would write into the agreement to to cover the county. If it's going to help um meet the food insecurity that is cut result, is a result of COVID nineteen, the guidance does say it can't, that the funding can be used for um things that are a result of COVID nineteen impacting the community. So you could use it for funding to help, just like the funding that we use for the um food bank. That will be something we believe we will be able to uh code. We've already identified that we will code that against against the CARES Act funding. So we may still be able, if the court is willing to um provide a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars to that grant match, uh, we could work on that being a portion of our CARES Act funding.
I'll go after Commissioner Robinson. I mean, I'm I'm sorry, Commissioner Leon.
Commissioner Leon, would you like to comment, please?
I think Commissioner Robinson was a little before me, Judge.
Okay, Commissioner Robinson, go ahead and then we'll go with Commissioner Leon.
Commissioner Leo, go here and then I'll come back after you.
Okay, uh, Betsy, I didn't really understand what you said. You broke up your conversation. Uh, you know, what what I look at is, I I know Commissioner Stout and and Judge, you're very passionate about this, and uh there's nothing trivial uh on any of us. I know, I know that Commissioner Stout mentioned that uh the square dance is easy to get rid of. Well, it 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 is, I agree with you. It's not in the priority of these these other issues, but it's not easy. It impacts a lot of people. Uh, it is in my precinct. I don't want to get into the price of charity and all these. Uh, I think that the staff worked real hard to give us a solid recommendation. That a hundred and forty-eight thousand might mean two full-time employees that we don't have to let go. Uh, so my idea is go with the staff's recommendation as it stands.
Okay, Judge, Commissioners, um, I really appreciate that, Commissioner Leon. We.
Betsy, can I finish?
When we.
We still have Commissioner, Commissioner Robinson, we still have your comments uh before we go to Betsy's comments.
I mean, to cut you off, Mrs. Betsy, but the thing is, bottom line is, we we, I mean, each each one of us could nitpick and say, well, look, we should save this and save that one. You guys. You guys, the reason I asked you questions about how many days and hours you guys put in to make these recommendations, I have some disagreement with some of them as well, but I hold my thoughts on that because the thing is, what is best for the county? Not what's best for me, not so much what time I put in for any particular program. I like a whole lot of programs. But the thing is, we got to cut. The bottom line is, we're in a crisis situation, you got to put a lot of hours in, and I go along with your recommendation.
So Commissioner Robinson, you don't feel that quadrupling the amount of money that you're investing in something is good for the community?
Don't put words in my mouth, I didn't say that. We're in a crisis.
That's what it sounds like.
Commissioner, we're in a crisis situation right now. We need to defer, cut, we need to do something. And we sit there and tell them, well, Betsy.
And this program, this program would, would, would be, would bring four times as much money into the community for an issue that is, that we are going to be dealing with for many years, and we're planning on leaving millions of dollars on the table.
Can you show me that in writing? Can you show me that in writing? Can you show me that in writing?
If we put $138,000 into this program, that's kind of Jimmy.
Can you show me in writing?
It's on a presentation. Would you like me to send you the presentation? Would you like me to send you the grant, the grant application? I can send it to you.
And it's guaranteed?
We spend $138,000, we get 500, more than $500,000 out of it, yes.
Commissioner, my comments are staying. My recommendation is go with the recommended cuts.
If Commissioner Leon has comments previously made, if that was a motion to move forward, I'll second that.
Authority.
Okay. Just to be clear, hi.
Christina, are we ready, are we ready at this time to be able to make that motion? We've completed the entire presentation. Betsy, I just feel we're a little premature here, but maybe I'm wrong. Christina, you might comment on that?
Sure. So a motion was made on the table by Commissioner Leon, and his motion, as I heard it, please correct me if I'm wrong, was to approve and authorize the suspension of the programs as recommended by staff as presented on the slide, which is labeled Court Values Actions FY '20.
That's correct.
I'll second.
Just, can I just make one comment? And that is that where I'm saying we're premature is because we're already reacting on a survival mode, as if we're not getting any funding. And I can tell you that a lot of the decisions that are on there would be offset considerably by the type of funding that the other counties have been getting. And I can assure you from our conversation that the other counties are not taking that direction before understanding the impact, the financial impact and the funding that's going to come into our community. And that's where I feel that we're being premature, because we're reacting as if we don't have any funding coming in. We're reacting as if we're on a survival mode before we have to be on a survival mode. And we haven't really understood the impact of the funding to be able, and the money that we're getting, to be able to sit back and say, now that we have X, maybe some of these things change, the scenario changes. But if we act now and the funding comes in, then where do we go from here? Unless on the motion, there's a caveat that we're able to suspend some, or unsuspend some of these items because we gather more data and more information that allows us not to keep moving in that direction. And so that's the, my concern is that the other counties are looking at their funding, being conscientious how they're going to use the funding before they start making decisions on what to cut and what not to cut. And that's why at the beginning, I said, do we know what the funding and what, how it's going to offset some of these cuts that we're looking at? So that's my concern, and that's my feeling about being premature of not having all the data that is necessary in order to make the decision we're going to make right now. And we haven't even looked at the funding. We haven't even gotten some of the funding. The other counties have gotten funding. And I'm sure that that's how they're going to adjust their budget. So anyway, I'm hoping that, that there's a consideration to allow more information before we move forward. Betsy?
Judge, why do we put up a consideration if we don't, we're not going to take any action? If it's premature, we should not be having this discussion today at all.
Well, that was my, that was my topic at the beginning. Do we know how the funding is going to impact some of the things that we're putting to eliminate or to suspend, as Commissioner Bettis clarified, that do we have enough information with respect to our funding to have a legitimate list on there? And that was, from the very beginning, was my concern. And so, anyway.
If we're able to get additional funding from this stimulus package that you're talking about, we always had opportunities to come back and reconsider.
Well, is that part, Christina, will that allow us that flexibility with this motion?
Yes, yes, sir. It's a suspension. It is not, in the meantime, you do not have, you can always bring back any of these items at some other time. It's just, it's just taking an affirmative action and also, quite basically, to give direction to staff on how they should pursue these items. Anytime, for example, in terms of the issue with the additional funding that may be requested or maybe built in for the HFFI program, if, as Commissioner Robinson has suggested, maybe that funding becomes available, that item can always be brought back before the court. It's not a complete elimination, it's just a suspension at this time, at least is what I'm hearing from the court. Thank you.
And you don't need to include that in the motion, that verbiage?
Which verbiage was that, Judge? I'm sorry, I missed that.
I'm saying, should the verbiage of that we can always come, when things come towards us, that we might make adjustments, do you need that in the motion, that we're allowed that flexibility?
You, you do not need it, because it's, again, a suspension, it's just that, a suspension. However, if you want to make that part of your motion, we already have a motion on the table and a second. You can ask the Commissioners who made that motion and second if they would like to include it. And so that language would be, you know, if funding becomes available, or however you phrased it, if they would like to make that a part of their motion, that they can. I don't believe legally you need to, to accomplish what you're trying to say with that, but certainly you can make that, that reference for purposes of the record.
Yeah, suspension could be indefinitely. That's what worries me, that suspension could be something we sort of live with until it happens. And I just thought it would be better to include that, you know, we might get more information or more data that allows us to maybe unsuspend any one of these items. So if that's not needed and it's clear, then so be it. If it's clear to everybody at Commissioners Court that we do have that option, then, then it's okay with me. Just for the record.
Judge, I'm the one that makes the motion. I want to leave it as it stands. It's, you know, I'd rather much be proactive than reactive. And we can always come back next week, make any changes. Government direction. Which funds for certain reasons. So I call a question, there's a motion and a second.
Commissioner Bettis?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
No.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
No.
Motion carries.
Miguel, if we can go to the two slides forward, please. Next one. So these are items we will bring back for discussion as we lead into the 2021 budget. However, we are going to recommend that some of these measures that are across the board will be part of what we bring in the 2021 budget, which is including a, it's not necessarily a cut, a permanent cut to the travel budget, but monitoring travel very closely, depending on the orders that are in place and the conditions that exist. Continuing to hold on the staffing reclass fund until we are more stable. And then also, we're recommending that we modify our 2021 budget directive to be, right now, it was 5% of operations. We'd like to modify that to 6% of overall operations, but we don't want to extend that until after May 15th, when we know whether a federal stimulus package is passed that allows for offset of revenue reduction. As, as I mentioned earlier, right now, those funds that are coming down, they have issued guidance that they cannot be used for revenue offset. So we would not implement staffing wage adjustments that were previously recommended last fiscal year. We would not, we would be asking departments to evaluate contracts for potential reductions. We would be looking at our staffing costs for additional reductions, such as reduced service hours, if the, as we monitor these items. We would look at implementing across-the-board hiring freeze, which could avoid approximately a million dollars. And when we implement a hiring freeze, we bring forth a policy, and again, this is for FY '21, that would indicate which positions were exempt from the hiring freeze because of the type of work that they do and the need for that service, and which ones are temporarily frozen while we get through this time. If things had not improved by that time, we would also request to reopen union negotiations to avoid future cost increases that are in that contract for FY '21. We would be evaluating also satellite offices if there would be any significant savings for operational costs. Those are examples of the items that we would bring forward in the FY '21 budget. Miguel, next slide. Wally? Wally?
Wally is still on the phone.
I apologize. I apologize, I was muted on my phone. So for upcoming monitoring, we are going to be very diligently, closely being monitored and updating our fiscal year 2020 and 2021 expense and revenue projections. That frequent estimation will occur for all funds, general funds, special revenue, and enterprise. We are going to, and we have been since this event took place, monitoring on a regular basis and applying for any and every external funding opportunity that we have, both federal and state. We are going to continue to currently monitor operational cost management, and we're closely with our departments. And I'll add to that. We went through this back in 2007, '08, '09. Departments rose to the challenge, and every department was able to meet the budgetary challenge that we had at that time. And so I'm confident with that collaboration, we'll be able to manage our costs going forward. Again, we'll also, as we approach the 2021 budget, is review the strategic budgets and our strategic plan as to what needs to be considered for continuing the funding and the investments, or defer to a later period. And lastly, looking at realigning our capital investments as we look at 2021 as what is the right amount. We do have recurring equipment, routine replacement needs. And so what we don't want to do is defer one of those investments that we may end up regretting down the future. So we'll assess what the consequence could possibly be for realigning that capital investment, or strategically look at what's the opportunity to go out onto the market and issue debt for any future capital needs, which, on the flip side, would impact our overall tax rate on the interest and sinking side.
To make up the remainder of the cuts that are needed, we will be asking departments to implement approximately a 3% reduction in their budget this fiscal year. We will be asking for cooperation from all departments to meet this cut so that we can get through the remainder of this year. And of course, if any, any federal funding becomes available that can be used to offset revenue, we will be updating you and bringing items back for your consideration immediately. Also, want to be clear that, you know, this is, these are first projections. As Wally mentioned, we're watching and monitoring this very closely. We're looking for all external funding opportunities. So several of the items we went through today, we will go back and look for, are there any other methods that we could find to help fund them? Are there any other sources of funding? Would any of these qualify under the CARES Act funding? And could we submit those as a CARES Act reimbursement? And then we plan to bring additional programs forward that do qualify for CARES Act to help our community. Everything from testing to rapid testing machines to community support services programs. Multitude of areas where we can help our community recover and get through this crisis. Are there any questions for us?
Betsy, can I add one more item on to that as well? When we, my team will be doing, at the conclusion of today's meeting and with your directions and instructions, is we will run some detailed remaining balance expense reports that we will send out to all departments with their target 3% number, if that ends up being the final number. And I will also have my team reach out to each elected office as the freeze on accounts that are under their control, I do have to seek their approval, but at the direction of the court, with the times that we're in now, I will be drafting an email to send out to each elected official to that effect, so that we could effectively just lock those up. And with that instruction, I don't have to do a budget change and draw those funds back. With those instructions, the auditor and the purchasing agent would prevent any requisitions and purchase orders from being processed through those accounts any further. So that will, in effect, suspend those accounts. Thank you.
Are there any questions?
I'm sorry, Betsy, just to clarify, I mean, so what's the direction that's being given to departments at this point? I, so I understand that there's a modified budget directive for 6%, but that comes after May 15th, if there is no additional federal.
That would be for FY, I apologize, sir. That would be for FY 2021. So right now, we're talking about their FY '20 budgets. The current fiscal year, we need cuts. So right now, we'd be asking them to go in and cut their budgets 3%. And I do believe with the, because you all cut everything on that slide, I do believe we can allow the 60311 account to count towards our 3%, but I'm going to need to double-check that with Wally. But we're going to be asking departments to cut their budgets now by 3%. This instruction is for next fiscal year. We're already, the deadline to enter budget for next year is really already passed. We're going to be asking them to modify that to 6% after May 15th, because we are going to wait to see what happens with any federal revenue offset funding.
So with your authority, the directive we would receive today is I would be emailing out electronically to all departments what their current budget balances are and their 3% remaining budget balance target that we'll need for further reduction.
Do we need action on that, Christina?
What I'm hearing from Wally is that that's, he's just requesting direction to do that. So there, you can either, I guess, make a motion to direct staff to reach out to departments per your budget director's recommendation on the, I think it was, emailing all the departments on what their 3% target budget balance is for further reduction. And so that would be your motion for direction for staff.
Okay, I make that motion as described by our attorney.
Okay.
If I have a question, um, Judge, if I may.
Commissioner Betis, uh?
So regarding, so, so here, I mean, I'm looking at the directives for, for considerations for fiscal year 2021. I mean, what, why aren't, I mean, can't some of those also be, again, with, with the remainder of fiscal year 20, um, also via cost avoidance? I mean, so what, why, why wait till, till 2021? I'm sure travels, I'm sure nobody's traveling right now. So I mean, in, in essence, I'm sure we already have a travel, um, reduction or, or restriction. You know, we can monitor it as, as things progress. Um, but like for, you know, one of the big topics, and I think one of the things that the court had mentioned on Monday, on Monday that we wanted to see today was, was the possibility of, of a hiring freeze for, for fiscal year, uh, 2020, at least that was my understanding, as opposed to waiting for a hiring, I mean, it, as opposed to, to waiting for 2021.
Uh, Commissioner? The reason, the reason is we believe departments are going to have to use that mechanism to make their 3% cut. So for example, in my office, I have a position that's vacant. It'll be one of the ways I make my cut for this fiscal year. And that, we're wanting departments to be able to use that for this, to meet their initial cut and, and give them some empowerment. So for example, if CJC has a vacancy and they don't want to use it, they may choose to do, go another route. And we don't want to place a hiring freeze on them until they have assessed how they can best meet their cuts. After those cuts are, the first round of cuts are made, we want to come back, see where, where every department, um, ended up. Did we hit the 3%? And then come back and evaluate whether or not we need to start those across the board policies.
And, and this is for both elected and non-elected offices?
This is for all offices. And obviously for non-elected, um, offices, the majority of those, um, the majority of those offices that fall under, um, Commissioner's Court through me, those obviously we can, um, we can mandate that their budgets be cut, but those other offices, we're asking for the spirit of collaboration and cooperation, um, to, to meet these immediate cuts that we need for fiscal year 20, or else it'll be more steep cuts for everyone for FY21.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Betis?
Aye.
Commissioner Lewis?
Aye.
Commissioner Stow?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samanieto?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Commissioners.
I'm sorry, and Judge, if I may, I have one, just one quick question to Betsy.
Commissioner Betis?
So, so Betsy, like, you, you know, the uniqueness of county government, I mean, the, the, the diversity of services that the county provides is, is very broad, right? Ranging from public works to, um, the administration of justice. There's going to be some departments that have contracts, you, you know, versus, versus, so, so I'm, I'm thinking of, of a, of a county court. You know, that they, you have, um, a county criminal court, a judge and their staff, but they don't have, um, contracts or, you know, that, that may be as extensive as public works. I mean, so if we're, if, if there's a directive to where, um, you know, 5% of, of, well, I guess it's limited to operations, but are, are, are the contracts that, that maybe a department has, counted towards, you know, is it going to be easier for some departments, I guess in essence, to, to make those cuts because of the extent of contracts that they have versus others that are just more engaged in, in, in direct services like a county criminal court? Does, does that make sense?
Yes, sir, but it's not going to be easy for any department. I can, I, I feel fairly sure it's not going to be easy for anybody. What, what it is going to entail and what we went through last time is we had to, you know, you had to evaluate different areas, different ways of doing this. And, you know, some, some of the ideas such as, um, a reduction in hours, but looking for a way to do it with employee input that results in the best outcome for both parties. Um, it may be, um, suspending certain types of services, memberships, um, not renewing legal books. I mean, there's, there's a lot of, and, and smaller, smaller departments generally have smaller bu- budgets. So dollar amount, their reduction may be less, but it's still 3%. And so, um, we will have to work with departments and look for creative ways. And last time we went through this, I have to say, our, our county team came together and everybody was creative. Already I've been receiving emails from elected officials, several elected officials, emails of, we're in this together, we will figure this out. And we were initially talking about a 10% cut and everyone was sending me those types of emails. I already had a constable email me that he was going to make sure to reduce maintenance costs and wear and tear on vehicles. He was already asking that all vehicles no longer be used for take home for this period of time. Just everybody is, you know, doing their best to try to help us through, all of us through this time. So i- is it, it sometimes seems easier when departments have more contracts. It's still really difficult because I do not believe that we are a government that has a lot of excess funding or excess services.
Uh, Betsy?
The other thing is?
Betsy, just, just a caution, just a caution on generalizations. Uh, I, I get different emails and, and so, uh, I, I would just like to caution that we don't represent other departments or elected officials in, in any way unless we hear directly from them and not in unison. I think it would be much better for this process, uh, because these generalizations are, are heard by other elected officials that are thinking differently. And, uh, and so just want to make that comment that, that, uh, as, as when you refer to elected officials, that we don't generalize any, any support, uh, unless it's, uh, maybe coming from the council of judges as a whole or whatever. Just, I, I think that would be the best, the best way to approach this.
Yes, sir. And just in general, um, not about elected officials, but in general, we will work with every department on, um, what it is that they are able to do and what they're not able to do, and, and try to help them as much as possible.
Thank you, Betsy.
There's no further questions. That's all the items we have for today.
Uh, Betsy, you're, you're freezing up on the, we, we can't hear you and the screen freezes on us a little bit. Uh, so Miguel, can, can you help out?
Judge, Commissioners, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, yes, there you go. Thank you.
Okay, um, though, we, there is one more slide, but these are just ideas and options to help our departments of ways that we have done this in the past. Um, I'm sorry, one more slide down. These are, these are ideas that they, that they have used in the past. And as I mentioned, we will work with them, um, to provide whatever help we can. And, um, that concludes all the items we have today unless there's any comments or questions from the court.
Thank you, guys.
Judge, just a, a quick comment.
Uh, Commissioner Betis? You're, you're also breaking up and your screen freezes a little bit, but maybe we can hear you.
Let me. I have, uh, can you hear me now?
Yeah, okay, we can hear you. It's just the, the screen was froze.
Yeah, I, I have a lot of things connected to the wifi here. Betsy, just again, regarding the, the, the funding, uh, the federal funding in particular, um, I, I really appreciate, uh, the, the, the work that you all did. And can you still hear me clearly?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay, um, I, I appreciate the work that, that you did. Um, and, and hopefully, you know, you know, there, there's more funding that comes in in the future. I, I guess, you know, the only thing I would ask is that, is that, you know, moving forward as, as we look at the funding, you know, obviously looking at what our organization has spent already and what we're going to continue to spend, um, is, is very important. But if we could also look at opportunities where perhaps, again, that there's areas that were, you know, the community is being underserved, again, and to, just to emphasize testing. You know, if, if, if we can just be sure that the, you know, this funding is an opportunity to help us with that, you know, as, as well as, you know, recouping the cost that, that the organization is incurring because of COVID. But, but, you know, again, maybe that might require collaboration with the city to ensure that we're getting sufficient testing for the ratio of, of their population and, and, and the county population as the funding was allocated. I think that's really, really important to, to look for opportunities that perhaps we're not, um, currently or didn't have the resources previously to, to, to look at.
Yes, sir, and, um, we're, we'll be looking, what, what, there's going to be several ways we might be able to provide assistance, not just the testing. It might be transportation. I know Chief Rodriguez sent us an email this morning while we were in the, in this meeting that there is testing in, um, uh, another area that might be closer for Torneo, but one of the things we may need to assist with is transportation. And those costs could be reimbursed through our CARES Act funding. So that's just one example of how we will look for multiple ways and ask for the court to approve. And I will tell you, we'll probably ask for some, uh, authority to move on these more quickly because some of these cannot wait a week for action. So, um, we'll, we'll be looking for either a couple members of the court to be assigned to work with us on these items until we can bring them back the following Monday. But yes, we will be working for all kinds of methods and ways that we can assist in the community.
And, and that order, that authority doesn't exist already under the, the emergency order that the judge issued? To speed up the process that whatever it is can't take a week?
I, I'll need to review that with legal. We may have some abilities. I know like for purchases of PPE, we've used some of that authority. So we may be able to use it also for like arranging transportation and then bringing it back on Monday for final approval.
Yeah, some of that authority was allowed, um, and recognized in some of the earlier actions that were taken. And then also your chief administrator has some delegation as well per her policy on emergency situations. Um, and what I'm hearing is the idea is, is, you know, something comes up on Monday afternoon and you have to move on a Tuesday, coming back, I guess, to the court for, for a report or, or for a ratification. And I think, um, that, that could be worked in. Um, again, as long as it's, it's emergency related, COVID-19 related, and there's that process. And, and per that policy, we do work with, with county administrator, excuse me, county administration to review those, those issues as they come up.
Betsy, Judge, I want, I wanted to, uh, just, just, uh, bring one more, one more issue up to y'all. And moving forward, uh, when we're talking about expenditures. So, um, I had a conversation with the, the Census Complete Count Committee yesterday with, with the action team. Uh, they're talking about, uh, their, you know, the finances of that, of that campaign that's been, that's been trucking along and, and, uh, you know, I mean, I think we've been doing a good job. They've been doing a pretty good job. You know, El Paso is, is, uh, ahead of the, um, the state when it comes to our, our, our counts. And, and we're ahead of a lot of, a lot of the bigger cities, what, what they were looking at last time. And so I think, I think the campaign is having some impact, but, um, you know, of course, it, it was only to, to last, uh, through June. And, um, the census has been extended to October. And, and so, you know, they were, uh, talking about the need for, for further funding if, if possible. So, um, you know, unfortunately, they, they were not able to, or have not been able to up to this point, hit their mark when it came to, um, you know, trying to fundraise in the private, uh, sector. I mean, it's, there are a, a number of different reasons that, that, I mean, have influenced that. But I think, uh, uh, one of the big influences has definitely been, um, this COVID issue. And a lot of, uh, companies and organizations have been taking their money and, and utilizing it for, um, COVID response type, um, donations. And so, uh, a lot of, a lot of those donations that they had hoped to, uh, to bring in, um, just, just haven't materialized. And, and they continue to, to try and reach out to folks and, 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 um, you know, of course, try to raise some of that money, but it's, it's been quite difficult. And so, um, for them to, to be able to continue on until the end of September, um, they're looking at needing a, you know, an additional couple, couple hundred thousand dollars. And so I don't know, um, if that's something that we can help out with. I mean, I definitely would expect that we, that we would ask the city to partner with us if we, if we need to make any further infusions into that campaign. Um, I think it's, uh, really important that, that, that we continue to try and, and do what we can to get people out. Um, I, I think it would be to our detriment as a community, you know, for the next 10 years if we, um, just kind of drop the campaign off here at the end of, at the end of June. And, and just didn't have any further outreach or any, any further efforts, coordinated efforts, um, uh, on behalf of that, that, uh, that, that complete count committee. And so I just wanted to, to, um, let you all know and see what you, see, see what folks think. Uh, and, and I don't know if, if that's an expenditure that can be covered by any COVID money. I'm not, I, 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 I don't, I mean, maybe that's something that legal could look into, but, um, you know, it, it, it's, it's, I think it's a good thing that, that we had, um, an extension from the Census Bureau to can, uh, you know, as a result of the impact that COVID has had. But at the same time, it's, it's, um, it's, it's going to be difficult for us to, for that campaign to continue if we don't have additional funds.
It is a critical item. I mean, uh, that census is going to, uh, determine a lot of things for us in the future. And so any consideration to help support the census and other challenges and everything from people not wanting to respond to, you know, having more reach, reach out efforts. It's not the same ballgame. A lot of people think it's just a sort of like a delay and then, you know, we move forward. But in essence, uh, people are very reluctant, uh, you know, to fill it out.
And it's, Judge, it's, it has, it has been a lot more difficult, of course, because, you know, there were just, um, it, it's just so much harder to reach people, um, if you can't go, um, you know, without, without, you know, public meetings and, 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 you know, events and things like that. So, I mean, obviously the campaign has pivoted and is, and is using a lot of, uh, social media to try to get the word out and, and trying to be creative with, with the way that, that, um, information is, um, you know, diffused into the public and, and, uh, but, but again, I mean, if, if, I feel that if we.
Hi, Christina, the county attorney. I think we're, we're, the district county attorney. We're, we're, uh, going a little bit off the topic. Uh, maybe if we want to put it on for Monday, that might be a suggestion to kind of flush out, maybe another consideration there. I just wanted to make sure that we got back on, on track.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought, I thought, I thought it would be okay talking about it in the, in the, in the, in the context of the budget. But that's fine. Like, we can have an item put on on Monday to talk about it. Thank you. Thank you, Christina.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you for your ship on that. It's really good. Go ahead, Betsy.
I can ask Joel to work on the, um, I know our original agreement as to what that would look like and, um, what we could bring back for Monday.
Thank you, Betsy. And, 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 uh, my office is, is, uh, available as well. We can, we can provide y'all with any, with any information that, that we, that we received recently.
Yes, sir.
And Judge, that completes all the items on today's agenda.
Okay, well, thank you. I appreciate everybody's, uh, help. And I know there's some passion and we're looking at things from different perspectives and, uh, but I thank the, uh, the unity of, of the court to really address such a critical situation and, um, the relationships that we have with the community. So. So thank you for that and, uh, meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
This concludes today's meeting at 2:05 PM.